Can get it right. You go out and to the right and you can either go down the steps or the elevator, or if that's not working, you can't use the steps. There's an area of refuge.
And if for some reason that direction is blocked, you go down the hallway past the restrooms and just keep sneaking down that hallway. There's another set of stairs to the back.
We would be able to get in that way. It's not locked.
You can always go out.
But wouldn't you have to go through our office, your office?
No, the hallway sort of snakes.
Oh, okay. Good. Very good.
What else fails you got there?
That's not recommended, Michael. Stand there. Go out there and stand there and wait.
Yes.
Not jump. Okay, so, and agenda item changes? Okay, open to the public for items not related to the agenda. Anyone, anyone online if you're, uh, it looks like Michael Stevens online has his hand up. You can unmute and turn your video on.
Good evening, everybody. How you doing?
Great.
Uh, so, uh, I intended to be there in person, but childcare issues prevented that. But, um, anyway, so my question has to do with the amendment that's up for a second reading. Um, in a couple of weeks related to the class two wetlands where there's going to be a a change, um, where, uh, almost like a grandfathering in for, uh, homes under a half an acre. Where there's going to be, you're going to be allowed to build within, I think it's 50 feet now. Are you, are you familiar with the amendment that I'm talking about?
We aren't familiar yet.
Michael, that is one of our agenda items.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
It is.
Then I can wait.
Right. Very good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything not related to the agenda? We can, um, any announcements? Anyone else have announcements?
I think Paul had some staff announcements.
Paul's doing something.
Hi folks.
Yes. Um, can you hear me? Great. Uh, so one is that, uh, I testified along with Chair Helen Reilly last week on S 100 to the House Committee on Energy and Environment. Uh, so just wanted to update you on that with, uh, following through with the same, uh, broad feedback that the planning commission had given that the council endorsed and moving it more towards, uh, some very specific language, uh, as that's really where they're at in the uh, deliberation process. So we'll see where that goes. Um, the second update is to let you know that, uh, last week, uh, Lana Blanchard and I gave an update on, uh, what's been happening in and around city center over the last few years, uh, to the city council. And, um, I'd be happy to share both the video link and the PowerPoint to the commission if you'd like to see that. Um, I think it was a, uh, pretty well-rounded, um, presentation. So you might want to see that. And then lastly, um, you know, back to the first one of S 100 as we begin to think about your work plan for next year, um, will be, um, you know, we're started, we're starting to sort of scope out what kinds of amendments, uh, if it does pass, or frankly, if it doesn't pass, that, um, the city may wish to embark on both within the land development regulations and some related, um, tools like the, uh, uh, the sewer ordinance. So, um, you'll likely see that coming from us when you talk about your next year's work plan. But just to let you know, we're thinking about it. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Um, Paul actually just did note that, uh, because that item about the wetlands or LDR is fairly late in the agenda. That if, um, Michael Stevens wanted to make a quick comment now, that wouldn't be necessarily considering childcare issues and everything else, that wouldn't necessarily be out of line. Just as an option.
Sure. You want to go ahead, Michael? That seems reasonable.
Sure. Thank you. Um, so I'm, I'm one of those problems that fall that will be affected by this amendment in a positive way. Um, as, as I understand it, the, the current location of the, of the protected wetlands right now, where I could theoretically build would, would basically put me past my house into my driveway. Once this amendment gets put through at 50 feet, if, if, if it gets put through, the 50 foot mark would be in my kitchen. And, and so one of the things that we've been toying with was potentially, um, just improving on our deck that we have in the back right now. We talked to a contractor about it, but, but my question, I guess to the, to the group is, you know, understanding that if, if that gets put through that way, I'm, I basically couldn't get a permit pulled to do, to do any renovation work in a bathroom in my house right now, just because even with a 50 foot reduction of where it currently stands. And I'm just curious about how, how you all intend to handle people like me who the house was built, it was conforming. Now theoretically, all the houses around me are infringing upon a setback, whether it's 100 feet or 50 feet, and they theoretically couldn't do an improvement to a bathroom within their house because of the, even with the potential amendment that's forthcoming.
Yeah, you know, so it doesn't seem like an inside thing would be interpreted that way. I don't know. How, do you have a, a way where, how staff has been interpreting like inside renovations?
Sure. Well, a couple of things. One, um, it, the, the proposed amendment would return the standards to where they previously were for properties like this. So, um, I'm a little bit surprised to hear that the 50 foot wetland would be into the house, but maybe it's an older house in the city and we'd be happy to talk with you offline about it. Um, Michael and sort of see, you know, to, to, to sort of follow up on your individual case. But to Jessica's question, renovations in the inside of a house wouldn't be affecting the wetland one way or the other. So, um, that is not something that even if it were within the, um, with, within the wetland buffer, um, that wouldn't change in any way the function of the wetland. So we would not, um, we wouldn't, uh, do that. Uh, we, it wouldn't affect it. But you did also talk about a deck that might be a slightly different circumstance. So, um, this amendment is now technically with the city council, um, as well, just so you know. But if you'd like to follow up with us, um, uh, offline, um, say tomorrow or the rest of the, this week, we'd really be happy to sort of work through your circumstance and see, um, you know, what, um, what this presents for you.
Okay. I, I've been talking with Betsy. Who would be the best person to direct the?
Sure. Um, Betsy is your, is your great first point of contact and, um, but you can let her know, uh, that, that you attended here and that you want to do a little more follow-up. We'd be happy to do it with you.
So, so, okay, just tell her and she'll push me through to the right people?
Uh, yes, although she's actually out this week. So one, I'm going to put my contact information in the chat here and you can reach out to me directly. Okay?
Thank you all very, very much.
What is your address? Where do you live, Michael?
I'm in, I'm in South Burlington. I'm in obviously South Burlington. Um, I'm in, uh, 65 Haymaker Lane. I'm, uh, right off of Allen in between State Road seven and Spear.
Yeah. Cause you know, part of, part of what I think some of these questions are coming from is, um, you know, we've had that 50 foot buffer requirement in place for a pretty long time. So, you know, I think part of our hope was that, you know, most of our neighborhoods um, built within the last at least couple decades would have, would have had things like a deck and obviously your house itself outside the 50 foot, um, buffer. And I guess just as another point, um, I think that it is with the city council now, but you know, I think we wouldn't want to recommend anything any less of a buffer than what we previously had. We wouldn't want to just reduce buffer. But, um, I think when you talk to Paul, you also see that there's some special language for, um, restoration and stabilization and refurbishment of existing things. So, you know, I think he could help you kind of wade through that.
Okay. Okay.
And you know, how old is your house?
It's, uh, I, I, I think it's four years old.
It's not an old house.
Not an old house. No, it's pretty new.
Know exactly where it is.
Well, it's right, it's right behind the park. Um, we're right next to the pathway to the park over here on the cul-de-sac.
Well, I think, I think you have a special case there that you should talk to the staff about, cause it doesn't seem like it should have been built that way. Um, but, um, yeah.
Okay.
If you have additional questions or comments about the new regulation, they should go to the city council next Monday, you know, after you follow up with staff.
Okay. Perfect. I appreciate all your feedback. Thank you so much.
Great. Okay. So I think we can move on to item five, the LDR amendments. We're going to have a public hearing for LDR 2301 about solar requirement and LDR 2302, which are are a variety of minor technical amendments. In our packet, we do have, um, the specific language we'll be addressing um, under this hearing.
I'll move to open a public hearing.
Yes.
I'll move to open the public hearing to review LDR 2301 and LDR 2302.
Okay, Duncan seconded. Okay, on favor of opening the public hearing? Okay, that is unanimous. And we can, is there anything that staff wanted to give us an update for before we hear from the public?
Uh, just very briefly, Jessica, um, you'll see in your packet, there is, so there are a couple of very, very minor edits that was recommended from our legal counsel in their review. Um, it's just, just tiny little wording changes. So I don't think there's anything of substance. Um, but, um, if you agreed with those, uh, then in your motion, you would accept those changes later if you decide to move them up.
Great. Okay. Any, anything from commissioners before we?
Didn't have anything or a couple, a couple of minor corrections you just sent to, that had to do with numbering.
Michael sent a few, um, missing or misnumbered, you know, in the sort of outline structure, like a missing D or a missing C, that kind of thing. Easy, easy for us to fix without needing further action.
Great. Um, okay. So does anyone from the public have any comments on the proposed amendments? Or questions? I'm going to state your name.
Uh, Keith Epstein, uh, I'm a South Burlington resident and member of the energy committee, uh, but I'm speaking on behalf of myself. I say, I want to say that I think this is fantastic. Uh, very happy to see this is here. Putting more solar on commercial roofs will help preserve land for more important uses. You know, as we, as we get more renewable energy, uh, if we can put it on the roofs, then the land can be used for recreation or housing or.
Climate mitigation.
Climate mitigation.
Give his comments, Michael.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Okay.
So, yeah, I, I feel probably you don't get too many people coming saying that they support an amendment. So I wanted to come and say that I support it wholeheartedly. And also I had some thoughts about section C. It, it was a little confusing to me. So I wanted to see if, if it's just me who's confused or if it actually could be reworded to be more clear. First thing I noticed is that section C doesn't have a title like, like A and B have. A says purpose and B says applicability and standard. And then there's C all by itself. So I didn't know if it doesn't need to have a title. That was just the first small thing. And then the second thing is that it, it starts with some a written confirmation from the utility that it can't accommodate the solar PV system, which is something that hopefully won't happen very often. And then the items one, two, three are things that are required for every system. So what I was thinking is perhaps if one, two, and three came first, these are the things that are required. And then in the off, off chance that the utility can't accommodate it, then that would be a, a fourth item. Is that?
Does that mean where the utility cannot accommodate net metering?
Well, there's, um, in section B, it says, section B1, it says, the requirement set forth herein shall be reduced to the extent. And then there's a few options. And the first option is if the interconnection with the relevant utility cannot accommodate due to limited plant capacity, a solar PV system designed, uh, to maximize the solar ready zone. So I think this is saying that if you want to install a smaller system, you have to get permission from, or not permission, but a letter saying the utility says we can't accommodate it. So we, so we can't put it on there.
Uh, you can put it on, but it can't be net metered. You can put it on and take the power directly yourself, right?
Well, that's what we say above in, um, one of these spots. Three, B, B three says it doesn't have to be net metered.
Yeah, that's a very good question because the way I, the way I read it, if the utility says that they can't accommodate it, then you don't need to put a solar system on. But an alternative would be you do need to put it on. You just can't net meter it. They're saying two different things. And I'm not sure what your intent was.
My, my was, my understanding was that if you can't net meter, you still are required to produce the power and use it yourself or sell it to somebody else. Or use it to charge batteries, storage facility. I mean, so you raise an interesting question. Um, solar PV systems, if they're not interconnected with the grid, can get quite expensive. And, um, my understanding of the purpose of this was to help offset grid load, et cetera. If you're requiring somebody to put in a system that has no feedback to the grid, you can be hitting them with a big impact. So I, I didn't understand that that's what. Because you can't sell it. Cause you can't sell it and, and you may not be able to use it. So then you have to put in storage systems, which get terribly expensive. And it has to stand independently from your grid, your grid tie. So then it almost becomes just a backup system if you are grid tied.
It's a cost per head.
So it gets, it gets a little crazy. And so my understanding was if the utility is saying we cannot accept more solar in our grid, that if you choose to go ahead and put in solar anyway, good on you. But that's a pretty steep, uh, ask to put on a commercial enterprise that, that may not have any use for that. And we talked about selling it. There's nowhere to sell it if it's not connected. Unless you have people coming to your cars during the day and that's not much.
So Keith, it sounds like you, you were looking at, and I, I get what you're saying. You're looking for clarification as to when you would not have to put in a solar PV system.
Uh, well, I think it's clear about that.
It's just under 3,000 kilowatt hours. That was my reading that, that, that's an exemption. But the scenario that Larry just raised, that I don't know if it's incredibly clear in here. I agree with that.
It sounds a little ambiguous.
Yeah. And, and also just the order like on, on section C. The first, it says, the application for a zoning permit shall include. And then the first thing it lists is something that you don't usually need. It says, as applicable, written confirmation from the utility that it cannot accommodate the solar PV system, which I'm guessing that 99% of systems will be able to, the utility will be able to accommodate them. So it seems like that this is like a, a tiny little edge case that should probably go at the end of the list of things that are required.
I think the one, two, and three are additional things you'd have to submit in this case. Like in the case that the utility isn't gonna take your power, then you have to get the letter, which is the written confirmation. And then you also need to submit one, two, and three as backup information, supporting the letter. That's what I, but it is true. Like the written confirmation from the relevant utility should really be one. And then two, three, four should be those other things. Like what are the things you submit?
I thought one, two, and three were needed to be submitted regardless.
That's, that's what I.
So if I'm, if I'm applying for a permit for my PV, I need to, uh, the system design, I need the anticipated kilowatt hours generation. And I need the, uh, expected building usage to go along with my permit. However, if the utility isn't allowing me to do it, then I have to have the letter from the utility that tells me I can't. Is that the way you're reading it?
That is the way I was reading it.
Okay, then that is very strange, the way it's written then. I don't know, Paul, you look like you're trying to say something that might clarify.
Uh, I'm, I'm looking to see if there was a, um, if there was something that transposed in the drafting. Um, cause it does, it does seem to be floating out there. So I guess my recommendation is, um, that unless we find something this evening that I might suggest that you close your, if you're ready, close your public hearing, but maybe not take action on it at this meeting and potentially at your next meeting to do so. Um, because this feels like something that should be very clean and clear. But, um, if you're willing during your next item, I can do a little bit of exploring. Um, and you could table any action to the end of this meeting if you wanted to still keep it on the agenda for tonight.
Yeah, that's one second.
So I can do a little digging while you're working on your next item here, because that's really more Kelsey's item. Um, and to see if there's something that transposed or something.
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, do you have more comments?
I also, I just wanted to point out that there is a slight difference between net metering and interconnection. Interconnection means it's physically connected to the electrical utility. This building is enter, has a solar system that's interconnected, but it does not have a net metering agreement. Net metering is a, it's a financial agreement where you have arrangement with the utility that anytime you send power about, they'll pay you the same rate as what you pay when you buy it. But since this building is always using more electricity than it generates with the solar system, it doesn't have a net metering agreement because we're not allowed, the city's not allowed to because we have the big solar project in the landfill. So we've already reached the, the maximum that we're allowed to net meter. So it's just a, it's a small difference, but you know, when you're talking about details, sometimes that kind of thing matters.
Yeah.
And, and I don't, I don't think it actually has any applicability to this, to these rules. Um, but just the fact that, you know, Lori, you brought up about interconnection, net metering, and I just wanted to make sure you understand, understood the language.
Yeah. So, so number, under B, uh, three, they are listed separately as interconnection or require a net metering system. Um, so they are sort of used as different, different phrases, but, but you're right. The, the intention of three is that the city is not requiring anyone to enter into any contractual situation with a utility, whether that is full like net metering and, you know, cost contract or even the, even the connection that would be required. It's not entering into that realm of private.
Uh, Michael?
Yes. Just so that in, in a case like that where, um, the utility says we are not going to interconnect or net meter, then, then that facility would have to be off-grid like Land Press or whoever it is. I, I believe they're using their wind generator directly and that they use the power for their own purpose. So, um, I mean.
This is just saying that there's always the option to do that.
Yeah.
You don't, nothing in these requirements are, is requiring anyone to connect to the grid.
So, okay. So in theory, I, I as a commercial owner of a commercial building could
For whatever reason.
Use the power for whatever purpose I could.
Yep.
Or use it as, uh, to supplement what I'm going to take from the utility.
Any other comments? Andrew, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I, I just want to echo what Lori had said. So I don't think the intent here was to require someone who could not interconnect to have an off-grid system. I think the intent was if you can't connect or you can't connect, uh, to the size of your system, that we wouldn't then require someone to build a system. On the other hand, if they don't want to connect and they want to build something off-grid, they can do that too, but we're not requiring that either. So I, I do think it would be too much to say to someone that can't connect. You now have to build off-grid. I, I don't think that was the intent.
Okay.
Agreed.
Great.
So we want to table this to the end of the meeting and see if Paul is able to come up with, with a clarification.
Well, so typically how this works, and we didn't really talk about this at all, but typically we like get all the public comments on the whole thing. And then we close the public hearing, then we have discussion about what we want to do. But I, I think you're probably right. But I think for now.
Just out of order.
Yeah, no, it's fine. I didn't give you an order. So.
I just want to clarify. So I'd see we're, we're looking for, to clean that up for the situation where somebody is not going to, would not be putting in a system.
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, which I think makes complete sense. I mean, I completely agree with Lori, Andrew, and what everybody said. Just want to make sure we're, we're getting all the comments before we make a decision.
C is outlining the requirements to show that you can't, um, be providing, can't be attaching a system to the utility that meets all the other requirements, like expected generation.
I think Keith probably has a good idea of putting some sort of title there too.
Well, well, actually that, that brings up a question for me is that, is it, does the city want to collect the data about the solars? Like items one, two, and three seem like useful information to collect on a building permit, regardless of whether it's allowed or not allowed by the utility.
Yeah. I actually think C should be stuff required, whatever those words are. And then a lot of that first sentence should probably be like one of the four things they need to provide if applicable. I, so I think you're right. I think it's just poorly structured. Maybe like the number one wound up up in the, I think that's what Paul's gonna.
So yeah, that's, um, I've, I've looked it over and I think that that's exactly what happened is that, um, as the attorney worked on language, it, it was sort of got structured as, um, if, if you, if Green Mountain Power, the utility determines that they can't do it, then you don't have to do the rest of it. So that becomes the first one. But if you, um, and then the rest of them are necessary. Um, if you are, um, when you are proceeding, but it's a little bit awkward in its wording. Um, so I, I would agree that a title and then maybe a little bit of reorganization might be helpful there. It's, it's your call. I think I would feel a little bit better if I had the chance to work on it, not on the fly, but, um, let me, if you want, I can also, um, work on it during this meeting, um, while you guys are working on the comp plan and I may be able to have something at the end of the meeting for you.
Would permit requirements work as a, as a title for C?
I think something like submission requirements as a title, and then I probably want to reword that initial language just slightly to say, to, to say that, you know, as, um, as applicable, and then in all cases, the remainder.
Yeah.
Something like that. So I don't think it's major rewording. Um, if you'd like to, I can take a shot at it while you're working on your other items tonight.
Is there general agreement on that approach? Just so we know.
I have a process question and I don't know if this is the right time for it, but it's about revision to LDRs and ambiguity like we're dealing with and interfacing with specifically the DRB, but maybe even the energy committee, et cetera, to get this kind of feedback as we're doing LDR updates so that we don't create ambiguity that then is difficult for the other commissions and groups to, to deal with. Is this a time to talk about that or is?
So I guess I'll just, I'll step in about the DRB in particular. Um, it's not the role of the DRB and the role of the planning commission are separate.
Yes.
Um, and they need to remain so. What we can be doing is we can be having conversations as staff with our development review staff. Um, and so we do have these conversations a little more informally than you're saying, like floating language is saying like, does this work? Does this not work? Do you see an issue in application of these things? Um, so that's how it was, how it sort of works a little bit on the DRB side is it happens a little bit on the staff end. Um, the other committees, um, we're always, there's always an option for the planning commission to send language to committees for review. There's always a, um, option for the planning commission to request feedback from other committees, um, anything like that. Feedback from other committees, um, anything like that. That is just for this particular. Amendment. Is a sort of several steps ago. So that's, that's always something the planning commission can do for any particular LDR amendment. Um, it's just something that would be happening early in the process instead of.
Yeah, and I think exactly what's happening here, like, you know, Keith read this, knows the subject area and was like, wait a minute, so hearing for public and then. I think also the, um, the legal review also often kind of pull up stuff like that. I think in this case, maybe the legal review wasn't. Sure what we were trying to do, and that's why I wound up like this, potentially, so. Okay.
This is on job learning.
Yes, yes, perfect. Um, Helen, you're unmuted. Did you wanna say something?
No, I'm all set. Thank you. I'm just listening and I, but I guess I would say, having served on the Energy Committee, I agree with Andrew. What our intent was.
Great. Well, thank you, Helen. Um, Janet, I see you're unmuted. Are you trying to give some comments?
No, I'm not. I'm just listening.
Okay, great, wonderful, thank you. Anyone else, um? We can also be taking comments on, um, the, the two. Oh, two, the technical and minor amendments. If there are any comments on that, I wanna make sure we're covering kind of both of these. Okay, um, if we're done with comments, I think we can. Close the public hearing. No, so, so I guess what I would suggest is we can close the public hearing, which means we've, we've heard our feedback of everyone who's telling us things. And then we can move on to our discussion about what we wanna do, which is after the public hearing. Closes, and then at that point, we can decide to either take action. Table and wait for Paul for later in the meeting, or, or at that point, we could always table it to another meeting.
Or dispense with one, two and keep.
Yeah, we have multiple options at that point. Okay, um.
I guess my only thing is I would not move. Um, oh, two, to a public hearing without moving oh, one, just for simplicity of having, we don't wanna have every meeting have. Public hearings at city council. Leave frogging, so it would be great to keep them together if that's possible.
Yes. Okay.
Motion to close.
Yes.
Public hearing.
Okay, on favor. That was unanimous, so. On to discussion, or so Paul is working on the one item we task him with. Are there other items, um, that people have questions or concerns about?
It looked like it reflected what we talked about at the last meeting.
Okay. Um, then Paul is raising his hand.
Uh, you received two comments, one from Andrew and one from, uh, Helen about, I believe the statement was being. Clear that if somebody chooses to not connect the building to the grid, that they're not subject to the. To the requirement, is that, is that what the statement was?
If the statement was that if, if the utility does not allow you to interconnect. You're not gonna be forced to put solar on your building. So if for some reason you go to apply and Green Mountain Power says. We are not gonna allow you to connect your system to our grid. Then you do not have to go ahead and build that system.
Right, so the, um. Okay. I, I think that's. Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that is what it says. I wasn't sure if there was also a statement about. Um, if the building itself is entirely disconnected from the grid, but I think that the. Likelihood that a building subject to the commercial building energy standards. Which is commercial buildings for, doesn't connect at all to the grid at, in any way, shape or form, and then also doesn't wanna do solar. Is extremely unlikely because they just wouldn't have power, so. Okay.
Okay, um, then I think we're ready to table to possibly later in the meeting. Do we need, what do we, do we need to vote on that?
Yes, you should pick an i- an item in the agenda to insert it as table to that item.
To eleven or to twelve.
Let's table it to other business. Okay, I move, we table rest of this discussion to under item twelve, other business. Hey, on paper. Added under, under business, um. Okay, number six. Discussion of possible.
What? That was number six.
Oh, we tabled number six. Uh, it's just titled weird. That's why I just got really confused by that. Item six is. So my agenda, okay, so seven. Yeah, this is the LDR amendment request for eight Laurel Hill Drive, and we have. Within them out and a letter from the register. We do typically periodically, um, hear requests like this. We've been. A little slow to get to this one, so I apologize.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Bigness, so I am the property owner of the Laurel Hill five. I've had this property for about close to twenty years now. And it's been a struggle from day one. I kinda explain to you why. It's put his presentation together, so it kinda gives you. So I talked to, basically a brief will be about the property itself, some of the chances issues that I'm having. And what, how, what I wanna do to redesign, this compares in the local.
Just making sure that those online can see.
So just give you an overview, it's a currently single family residence, what about five bedrooms in there? Uh, the main building was actually moved from Shelburne Road. Long time ago. I have no idea when, but it's moved there. And then in addition, with the two car garage and living space in the rear, the connector to the main building was built in the eighties by prior owner, so. Um, so that's kind of, I, I'll, I'll show you this, I have some pictures of the. Property in the next slides, and I can show you all that. But our four is owning currently, sort of quarter acre lot size, and. Joining properties on the north is just an empty, doesn't share a lot. In the south, there's a single family home, accessory unit. The east is a duplex. And the west, uh, is a multi-story commercial building. Um, so if you're familiar with burnt bagel, if you've ever had that, just two, two us, two, two properties down the road. Laurel and Drive. It's obviously walkable, you know, everything's close by. Banks, restaurants, and the customers and all that, transit friendly as well, right, uh, location of where it is, so. Um, so it's fun to kinda show you the picture of, uh. How the building is, so this is a grab from Google Maps, and as you can see. There's a main building on, in the front, and I think it's kinda hidden. Is, is there a way? This is the main building out here, yeah, I had. Yeah, okay, so you can see the main building out here, and this is a connector that's built there, and the addition that was built right behind it. So what's happening is, and it's been happening for a long time, is all the water, you can see these. Three places, you see three roofs come together, right? And I have another picture, and so you can see the basement, so this is a, uh, main, this is a west side foundation. So previously I had, uh, many years ago, I applied for, the front side of the building was actually sagging. And I had to like kinda lift it and rebuild the whole thing, and just have porch in the front, add a rebuild and also. And, and when I purchased the back part of the main building, that wall was actually buckling as well, so. I've had structural issues, I struggled with it for many, many years, okay? So it's kind of what you can see is a west side face, where you can see the side interest of the building. And this kind of picture gives you a more clear picture of what exactly is happening. Um, the other thing is that this part of the building, uh, the connector and the addition are on slab foundation. Whereas the main part of the building, that's part, that's in the, what do you call it, block wall, and it's got a basement as well. But this one doesn't have a basement, it's got a slab foundation with four feet, I don't know what the minimum standards are. So structurally not sound, it needs to be torn down. And, uh, that's kind of the, I guess, what you call, and not only that, and not only structural issues, because of the condition of the house. And, cause I, I mean, I, was, because if I, I, I mean, I can, for example, bring up a roof, right? I kinda don't wanna do it the way it is currently, right? Because, you know, to me, it still doesn't solve the problem, so I've not had an opportunity to do anything on the property. And because that also what's happening is, you know, all these risks of, uh, squatters, trespassers, and people trying to, like, you know, trying to, what do you call? Trying to scope the place for, I guess, for having water, so all these risks are there, so out of necessity, I mean, obviously, you know, uh. I wanna tear down the, the back part and rebuild it. And as part of that, I wanna convert it to a multi-tenant property, uh, to make it a Bible project, so. Uh, Jim Franklin, he's an architect, and he can kind of walk you through the options, so.
Is the building currently occupied?
No, oh, well, it is, it is occupied. There's a tenant who lives on the, uh, above the garage and the addition space. It's backspace, yes.
But the main house is not occupied?
No, it's not.
Hi, I'm Jim Barrington, uh.
It's a single family, let me clarify, it's a single family house, so I cannot, I can only have one.
Jim Barrington, JPF Architecture, and so, anyway, Mr. Saleh came to me and he said he would like to, uh, try to do this. I did the code review. And, um, he's on a quarter acre lot. A four unit is allowed in R four, if you have enough land, but you need a quarter acre per dwelling is the rules. Um, and so we're definitely asking for a variance on that in order to make this work, making it a four unit. Would a help the ROI and the finances on this project to make it more viable, but it also. Due to the, uh, housing need of South Burlington and the location, this being the first house off Laurel Drive backing right up against. And I know you've got the rules, but it's not like it's deep in the property where you're gonna put a four unit, that would be more dense than. So, anyway, we did some design to see how it could work, and. Um, basically, we did two options, one has no garage. And just takes the four units, and so basically, this point here is the existing house. And so we'd like to renovate it and do a small addition to get additional bedrooms, and so. This would create two bedrooms on the, two, two bedroom units on the first floor, as well as two, two bedroom units on the second floor. Um, to add extra housing. We have the driveway that we, this is a little tricky, but that's because we're trying to stick within the lock coverage of the twenty percent. And forty percent total for building and building and, uh, impervious services. So that is option one, and option two. Mr. Saleh would like to get a couple of garages in there, and in order to do that. The minimum width with that I feel is for a garage, and they're a little tight, is eleven foot ten, clear inside, graphic standard says eleven eight. So we're playing with a little bit, a little hallway in between, so that each one's private, and that one, again, all of these are staying within. Lot coverage percentages. But this one does put us five feet over the back for the, uh, so we would also need, besides, uh. Allowing a four unit, we would need a setback variance, um. And sometimes I was gonna say about that.
Yeah, the, the line of the existing garage.
Yeah, so, and, and I know once you take something down, the setbacks grow back immediately, um. But the setback of the original garage is back there, it's about nine feet over, so tearing that back, so we would be. About five feet over instead of nine. And, um. Just the elevation, using the existing building up the front and a sloped roof coming off the back, um, we had some other options that we were looking at, but that just seemed to be. The one that. Looked okay, um. Any questions?
And, and I did look at state permits as well, you know, what we're taking, went through the. What do you call, the permit navigator.
Um, well, any questions?
So just so you know, we're back on the camera, so your camera's right behind you.
Yeah, Duncan.
We, we've, uh. We've sort of kicked this can down the road a couple of times, um, in Phil, in, you know. Uh, our one, our four neighborhoods, we've talked about it a number of times, we haven't really. Grabbed the bull by the horns and addressed it, um, you're absolutely right, it is a very tricky issue. Um, and it's one I think that we really do need to address, um. I understand the desire for their property, um, it sounds like staff is. Telling us we probably need to have a bigger discussion.
Yeah, the, uh, our concern is that you can't change zoning for a specific property for specific. You know, property specific reasons, um. The, the nature of it being on the edge of the R four, and as I outlined, my, my memo that was in the packet. Um, you could kind of do a weird change to the boundary, but it would look really strange. Um, and would sort of edge up on the spot zoning kind of concern, that it would have a keyhole out of the, it would put it in the C one, R fifteen, I believe. Which is the bordering zone that's along Shelburne Road, um. But this, Duncan's right, that this is part of a much larger conversation about the future of our, our four neighborhoods. Um, there's one where this is by the orchards, there's one here, um, by Chamberlain and Maker Park. Um, and Duncan's absolutely right, we've been talking about it for, for a little while, but haven't really taken. Action on it partially because we had to take up the comp plan, you know, city plan process. Um, intending that some of those policy. Not policy decisions, but policy intentions would be outlined in, in our next plan. Um, so given the timing of everything and given the. Um, situation where we are with the city, city plan update. It is staff recommendation that this is not necessarily a bad project, it's not necessarily a bad idea. Um, but we do need to be making that decision as, in the context of the entire area and for the entire zoning district. Um, and not necessarily piecemeal property by property. Um, so the intention is that that discussion would come up soon, but it's not a decision that we, that this commission, that staff recommend the commission. Be making, um, based on the merits of a single application or single request, it's not application.
I have a question.
Yeah.
It's also my understanding that. Variances. In today's situation are, are really problematic.
In, in Vermont, variances, um, from land development regulations of all kinds are very rare.
Yeah.
Um, it is a much more legally sound approach to be considering this issue. As an area issue, um, and addressing the changes that may need to happen, that then would be applicable and we, and. You've been pointed out in the same, in your presentation, like this is across the street from a single family home, it is next to a, a single family home or, or a duplex.
Commercial.
On the other side. Duplex on the one side and across from a single family home, so, yes, it is the edge of the Orchard's neighborhood, it's not sort of deep in the Orchard's neighborhood. Um, but it isn't sort of a weird island that, from a function of history, has, has ended up out of place. It is sort of amongst, it would be strange for two sides of the road that look the same to be zoned differently. Yeah.
So, I guess my question, it, it sounds like in your memo, you thought next fall would be.
Yeah.
Early as we could.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be the earliest, yeah, um, that, that's when. The, the consideration is that the city plan would likely be out of the planning commission's hands, um, by sort of October. Um, October into November and into the city council's hands, hopefully to then be adopted by the end of November, beginning of December. So beginning that conversation in sort of the late fall timeframe would be the earliest that we could begin talking about, um, things like this.
I, I just wanna reiterate, that it's, it's an incredibly important subject that we. We sort of skirted around, and it touches on a number of very important things for us, um, so. You know, I, I don't know how we push it to the top of our agenda once we're done with the comp plan, but. It's, it's really a conversation, it, it's, it's not gonna be an easy conversation, there's gonna be some very heated discussions, I'm sure, from members of the public, but. We really have to.
And we've been, we, and I didn't pass this under the group, but we've been asked again by the Affordable Housing Committee, like. What's going on with basically something that's very similar to this, like, you know, in the southeast quadrant, we had. Um, changed some of the densities from. Um, changed some of the densities from one point eight units for, for four units to be greater one point eight. You know, so there's, there's some very related issues, and I think this is really very in line with. Some of the things we've been asked to do from affordable housing and. Um. Yeah, so.
Given the issue, I feel like the, the issue globally for, for South Burlington feels. It feels crucial, if, um, I'm, feels bad to say we need to put this off.
Hmm.
But given the scope of what it's dealing with. Um.
It's, it's a.
There's no, there's no simple solution that really works. Without getting into the big conversation of what are we doing with the zone and how do we? How do we address this issue globally rather than just in this one spot?
Um, so I guess one thing is, we never just change something for just one property, that's not a thing. That just, not everyone knows that, and I think that word variance, I think, um. Some towns actually, and review boards maybe do things like that, but here in South Burlington, our roles are, are, aren't really set up for that. Um, so we couldn't very easily just say, sure, go do it, so, um, we've. Identified that, like, infill in our neighborhoods specifically, our four is, like, really important. Um, just haven't gotten there yet. We've had a lot of really big projects in the last couple of years that have put us off, and then, right now, um. You know, we wanted to make sure that we weren't, like, pushing, putting you off for, forever here, um, so we would talk about it.
Ten, twenty months to get to this meeting.
Yeah, we've, um, so we've dedicated basically this year. And you're, you're kind of eight months into this year, to like, spend almost all of our time on the comprehensive plan. So that we're like refocusing, like, what we need to do next, like, with public input, so.
But I hope you understand that, you know, the risk to the property, it's not just structural, it's more than that. And, um, my concern is, I mean, you start the conversation fall, I'm thinking it certainly is going to take two years or longer. Before, you know, something comes to paper. I'm just, given the condition of property, I'm not sure, because if, if the connector fails, it's going to hit the big main building, and the whole property is a loss. And that's, that's where my, my, my dilemma, my situation is, so, I, I hope you weigh the consequences of that too, you know, so.
Have a lot of empathy for your situation.
Okay.
Um, it sounds like that situation's been a long time coming. Um, and we will be as efficient as we can. Moving through a complex problem. And.
Michael, we're making noises over there.
How long have you had its property? Twenty years, twenty years, wow, and did you ever live in it though?
I did live in it, um, when I worked at IBM, but now it's global.
You bought from the heirs?
I'm sorry?
Who'd you buy from? The heirs?
Yes.
Yeah. I drank beer in the house. They had a lot of kids in high school.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I think we don't have great news, but at least with the timeline. Um. But, um, I think we're generally, as a commission, like, uncomfortable with just, like, making changes. That are in effect, like, big areas without, without really thinking them through. I mean, there are some reasons why R four is called R four, like, the idea being that there's four units per acre. And, you know, you're proposing right now, um, something very significantly different from that.
Sixteen, sixteen.
Yeah, so, because if you're, because you have a quarter acre or less than a quarter acre, times four, sixteen.
Okay.
You know, that's more on par with some of our very, very densest development areas along. Um.
So I guess my question would be.
Feels uncomfortable for us to just be like, oh, okay, it's a small change, it's, it's. It, it's actually a really big change.
So I guess my, my question to you would be, you know, on one hand, I'm looking at time, and the other hand, I'm looking at. And I understand your concern, right, because, you know, although this may seem small, when you look at the city itself, it's a bigger impact to see, so I understand that. So I'm trying to figure out where the middle ground is, you know, where, you know, where I can get moving on with this. At the same time, you know, something that the city can accept as well, so, that's kind of where I'd like to get your thoughts on.
I, I think what you're proposing is something that we're very interested in, uh, in some of the R four neighborhoods. It's just that we, we can't just snap our fingers and go, it's going to change like that. Um, I, I, your project is exactly what I think some of the stuff we're looking for in Phil. Um, it's just, we haven't approached that stuff, we, we haven't digested that subject and really got through it.
Okay, and we talked about looking for a middle ground, right now. If you wanted to move ahead with a project that fit within the R four regulations, you could do that.
Right, right, right.
Um, but until those regulations change, there isn't a, an alternate option.
I mean, I think something similar to what you have now, which is essentially two units. So our, our regulations do allow for a main unit and an accessory dwelling unit now, so. So right now, with us making no changes, I think that that's probably.
I believe you would have to live in one of the. That's the, that's the restriction with the, with the ADUs, is that the, the property owner has to live in one of them.
Yeah.
How much of the main structure, the front part, will you be using in this project, or you demolish most of it and down to the base?
The front part is staying as is, the front part is staying.
But you're adding, you're re, redesigning inside.
It's only, yeah, it's only the back part, the, the connector and the addition that you're demolishing, you're building, and then the redesign into.
Yeah, the structure and the stairs would stay in the existing, and the other units, and the rest of it would be reworked into the apartments that we should.
But you. Whole gut rehab.
Yep. Uh.
Um, I, I would suggest that. That, uh, the commission, not now, but when we're looking at our work plans. Let's look at this, see whether we can advance this in any way, without, without. Destroying the plan that we have and this, and the schedule we have.
Well, I think that means waiting till the fall, essentially, because we have almost every moment of our time plus extra meetings. That we didn't even add to the schedule to get the comp plan done, so.
Yeah, from here until the end of the fall.
No way to do another LDR change between now and the fall. So, just to be realistic, like, I don't want to have them leave.
I don't want to give it.
Yeah.
I agree, that's fair.
I, that's why we've avoided it, because it's a very large conversation.
But, you know, if we're starting to have the conversation as part of the comp plan discussions, you know, in our, in our section of affordable housing. In our section on future land use patterns, you know, I think we can actually be talking about kind of vision for these areas. Now, as kind of a lead up to that, so we can then in the fall point back to the comp plan and say. The R four district could have additional dwelling units added. Maybe there's specifics on how, I mean, I think that that's our, our task for now. Um, Sandy, did you want to weigh in? I see you unmuted.
Oh, I'm unmuted?
You're unmuted, it's okay, you didn't say anything, I just thought maybe you were trying to get our attention.
Nope.
No, sorry, I'll mute myself.
So, and for me, it's disappointing to be in this situation, but it is what it is. It, it'd be great to be able to say, oh, four more units, and.
Yeah.
We got to go through the process.
I, I understand. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and this was a great presentation, I think it really highlights some of the issues we can now kind of try to address, so.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming, both of you.
Thank you, thank you.
Hey, so speaking of the comp plan, we are going to jump in on a discussion about transportation. And then after that, we're going to follow up on the housing, so we can actually maybe address some of this right now. Um, so, transportation section, so these are similar to what we've been doing at the last couple of meetings, it's kind of our. First view of, um, of some sections. And ideas to be looking at kind of big policy statements, things that are missing, um, things we think are wrong, that shouldn't be in there. Um, knowing that in the future, we might be adding additional objectives, strategies, and, um, we don't need the board's back. So, jumping right into transportation. And it looks like a lot of this has already, it says that. Um, DPW and the Director for Capital Projects. And the Public Meeting in Transportation are all held.
Yep, that's, that's it. Amount of input that we've had, um, as with the other sections, the sort of skeleton of it is primarily from the previous plan, the twenty sixteen plan. Um, as with other sections, there's a lot of good stuff in the previous plan that, um, has been kept at some, some level. Um, but there's also quite a bit of, of new things, um, I would say generally speaking, this section, um, difference between sixteen and the twenty, this twenty-four. Plan, um, does shift us a considerable amount of the emphasis to multimodal transportation. Um, to pedestrians, to bikes, to, um, public transit, to all of these, these kinds of things, in enabling. Um, the use and development of those things to, to really build with, with the end goal of building community in South Burlington. That's sort of been the, an underlying theme that's been coming through from all the conversations and from the sections we've reviewed is. Um, many, many, many policy decisions and many, 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 um, statements that we want to be making in the city plan. Uh, feed into building, uh, a functioning and supportive community in South Burlington. Um, neighbors knowing neighbors, South Burlington having, having an identity, um, being able to walk and bike places, all of these things. Um, all feed into each other, so that's sort of the big sort of. Home shift, I think, from the sixteen draft, sixteen plan to the strat for twenty-four. Um, but otherwise, I'd love to hear your comments on specific policies and, and everything else.
I, I just, under objectives, um, the last one, support access to and function of regions, different transportation systems, da, 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 da.
Yep.
Um, I, I, I was thinking, you know, should it be a city goal to have a transit hub in city center? I E, you know, if we had buses. You know, is that something that, you know, because I, again, I, I think, I lived down off Spear Street.
Yeah.
You know, if I could get on a bus at Spear Street and have it drop me off in city center.
Yeah.
Great, not happening, but.
Yeah.
Is that something we should be trying to strive for? Objective, or, or have some, you know, if we had some sort of transit hub in city center where you didn't have to go into Burlington to get to South Burlington.
Right, so.
Is that something we should?
So I guess I would, I would just, yes, I, I mean, my, my sort of opinion from hearing what people were saying at our public meetings and everything is. That is a need, especially to sort of generally connecting this Shelburne Road area to the Williston Road and City Center area. Those are fairly disconnected as they stand now. Um, what you're specifically calling out locating a transit hub in city center, um, falls a little bit more into a strategy. Um, so we've talked a little bit about the objectives being sort of these goals that you want to be able to check in on in ten years. Like, did we make progress on this, did we accomplish this, hopefully with some measurables? Um, and the strategies being the action items to get to those goals. So, um, we don't have strategies in these drafts yet, that would be sort of coming in the next as we sort of cycle back through the committees and with staff and everything. Else, um, but to me, that would be a very appropriate strategy, saying, if, if that was something the commission wanted to include. But that, that type of thing would be an action item, that would be a strategy towards doing things like. Connect, well, I guess we do have sort of incomplete strategies listed here, um.
No.
I have an.
Increasing. Yeah, I, I think, I'm not sure that I'm going to say the same thing as Duncan, but I, I think it's more a question of adding. Uh, Green Mountain Transit routes where there are concentrations of people, like, there are going to be. Around here, and other areas like Chilburn Road, for example, there's no way you could go by bus from Chilburn Road. To here without going somewhere else. For example, they could come up one eighty-nine to Kennedy, and then you could get here, or in my case, where I live on Swift Street. Uh, if I could catch a bus at the corner of Swift and Dawson, I wouldn't ever drive up to the supermarket or, or, or to these meetings. Or all these meetings go on later, I couldn't catch the bus, but, um, I think the focus should, the emphasis should be maybe more on. Um. On, on connecting population centers or, well, you know, like, city center. Um, with areas where there were, where there are a lot of services that people here might use. Like along Shelburne Road, there's no way, no connection. I mean, I'm not quite sure why there's the bus service that comes up one, up I eighty-nine, I mean, one eighty-nine.
So that goes in the world.
Yeah.
Right up, I mean, it's right here.
So the other thing about, about bus service specifically, right now, Chittit County just has routes. With your buses to go in a loop, so we've got the seas, you know, loop, 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 we don't have any. For lack of a better word, shuttle services or services that run this corridor, up and down, back and forth, which. If I want to get from Queen City Park to city center, um, this isn't necessarily a good example. But as opposed to having a route that's going to get me right to a hub. And then on a bus that has to go through this whole circuitous route to get me, to get me somewhere. And there are a number of areas in our city where. A bus line that's in and out would be really useful. Um, and it would make public transit much more user friendly, because I don't have to take forty-five minutes to get somewhere.
So we kind of skip straight ahead to, there's a section on transit services, a few pages.
We have to leave.
Before we get.
No, we're not leaving that, I guess I just want to say, we don't have a strategy written out right now. There is text about the, this issue in the transit services, I just want to.
So we can pick it up when we get there.
We, we can, we can bring it up when we get there, um, but it is something, so I did attend the transportation public session, and this is something that came up. And it.
Bus service.
Yeah, inner South Burlington, like.
I think that's kind of what we're all talking about, maybe, you know, we don't need a transit hub in city center, but something that would generate bus service. Whereby, like you said, you could get a bus in southeast quadrant and be in city center, almost like a trolley system.
Yeah. So, um, generally moving chronologically in our packet, so there's kind of the intro to transportation, and then there's objectives. Incomplete strategies.
I got an question on objectives.
Sure.
Um, bullet number two is reduced vehicle miles traveled by two point five percent annually. And I think it would be really useful to have two bullet points there, one for personal miles traveled and one for commercial miles traveled. Because, because the personal, personal miles traveled, I think there's much easier opportunity. Or a different opportunity, I get five UPS trucks coming into my neighborhood a day, literally. There's not much we can do about that, but. How many times I get in my car to go run an errand, et cetera? I think if those two were separated, you could have incentives or, or programs around each. That are very different. For how to get you to take one trip a week instead of four, or how to.
How to get UPS to work more efficiently.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it comes out of our climate action plan.
Right, yeah, so the, the objective came out of the climate action plan, um, I would. I think that's a great idea, and it's, and to specifically target two different types of users.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if it is. I actually don't know the technical details of how vehicle miles are measured, how to know if we did that, um, but that's just my own lack of knowledge. In, I'm wondering if it might be easier to keep sort of an, an all users two point five, and then. In, I'm wondering if it might be easier to keep sort of an, an all users two point five and then have strategies. Be to target, you know, incentivize commercial users to be efficient in trips or sort of break it out a little bit, not necessarily. In the two point five, but in sort of how to reduce both groups of users to reach the two point five.
Mm-hmm. We have the same issue with trash collection where.
Yeah.
Six different organizations collecting trash.
But.
Yeah.
And, and then a strategy under this may be to. Uh, develop incentives or competition programs that, that can engage. Either communities or individuals in. Beating out their neighbor or beating out their competition, just making it so that it's something that. It has a carrot attached to it somehow or a, or an incentive. Then under strategies.
Yeah.
I also have a comment on, on the strategies on the, in the last bullet point, but I think we should add. That, and are designed to avoid adverse impacts to and fragmentation of our natural resources.
Where are you?
About the third strategy?
Yeah.
Update land development.
Yeah.
Okay.
In such a way that, you know, they are designed to avoid adverse impacts to and the fragmentation.
When you say, uh, when they are designed, the transit, the transportation needs or the new development?
Transportation, the, the new development.
Is designed to. I feel like that more lands in the environment section.
Comes from the current. Uh, from the two thousand and sixteen plan somewhere.
Maybe, I think it might be a separate strategy.
Well, we can add it, yeah.
Yeah, I think it might be a separate thought, but also very valid. Right, because.
I'm under, so I'm understanding the connection between environmental, like fragmentation and the location of developments. I'm not quite understanding the connection to. Ensuring transportation to those developments.
Development regulations that city owners to ensure that transportation needs created by new development are co- accommodated. Consistently with the objectives of this plan and are designed to avoid adverse impacts to and, and the fragmentation of. Uh, natural resources.
Okay. Yeah, that seems reasonable. Okay, I see. Um, you know, cause it, it is, it is a real thing, like thinking about like, you know, driveways that are, you know, we do address it some in the. LDRs for different resources about like the, um, you know, proving there's no alternative route to get somewhere. Um, you know, I, I think it's worth mentioning.
Okay.
To kind of support.
And.
Anti-fragmentation.
And in your mind, it doesn't, it's not covered by the consistent with the objectives of the plan.
I, that's what I was thinking. I, I think it is kind of baked in there, Michael. I, I understand you want to call it out, but I think it is kind of one of the objectives of the plan. It's probably mentioned.
Yeah.
Somewhere else in the plan, but.
Yeah.
I, I see what you're saying.
It's the, it's sort of the outcome of, of all these meetings dealing with one or two sections is that.
But these would be truck impacts from the building of, of transportation associated with new development.
Yeah, but the, so saying consistent with the objectives of this plan, the environmental objectives is one of the objectives.
To avoid fragmentation.
Right.
Yeah.
Either way.
I think Michael's just saying it's so important, it's worth saying specifically.
We're still in it.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter to repeat certain things which are kind of important either.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm agreeing with you, Michael.
What, what language were you, I, we said a few times, so.
And are designed to avoid adverse impacts to and fragmentation of. Our natural resources.
Okay.
If you want to be more specific, then you can refer to chapter twelve, but I wouldn't do that.
I would also not do that, so thank you very much.
So, were you proposing to keep only one category for the reduced miles traveled as opposed to separating it?
I was thinking that in, in the obje-, at the objectives level, but then I included in my notes to include strategies. That include incentivizing commercial users as one strategy to reduce their vehicle miles traveled in X, Y, or Z ways. And then incentivize personal users. To do the same, sort of call it out in the strategies while maintaining kind of an overall goal of two point five percent across the board.
I know some people think two point five percent is, is aggressive, but it doesn't feel that way to me.
It, right. It's sort of a, it feels like a small number, but.
It feels like a really small number.
It's, it, it, when you look at what that actually means to an, to an average sort of user, it's a pretty significant cultural shift.
All right, are we, so moving on to the next page, road transportation network.
I only had, I had one comment on a. On the fourth paragraph, the, the airport is so important to the economic well-being of South Burlington. That I would have added in the third or fourth line that connects. I one eighty-nine to Heinsberg Road, I would have definitely said, and to, and to BBT, and to the airport.
The sentence about Kennedy Drive?
And then, yeah.
Okay.
And then down at Williston Road, it's also serves as a connection to the airport. Second last line.
Makes sense. Anything else? All right, slowly moving forward, kind of the rest of that section's on that third page.
Then something on the, the thought, on the top of the next page. They talk about Airport Parkway, White Street and Airport Drive. Um, it's kind of a, you go by the airport and you have to turn left and you go right. But when they took those houses out, there's kind of a clearing down along the airport fence with no houses any longer. Couldn't, could there be a thought about realigning so that the road that goes past the airport that goes over to, um. Uh, you know, Limekill Drive, uh, go through there and not have to go into the Chamber of.
So that is that third, the last sentence in the paragraph.
Yeah.
Is that.
Realigning.
The very last pair, sentence in the paragraph.
Didn't, didn't we see something from the airport that proposed that?
They have it, they have it in their master plan.
As you say, we, I know we saw that.
Cause Airport Drive, you know, Fran is right, you've, you've got to.
Yeah.
Wiggle around existing homes.
So, the, it's, it's where the old dog park, we would go through where the old dog park was.
But I thought we saw something that proposed the road.
So it's, it's in their sort of long-range planning master plan, that's a process that they have to go through with the FAA. Um, it's nothing, it has not been proposed to the city. Exactly. It's been sort of shared with the city, but not sort of for city.
Oh, you told you. So they own the land, right?
They, he, for the most part, yes, the city still owns.
They have to give it to us.
The ci-, the city still owns the rights of way from the old streets. Um, so the city owns kind of a funny grid and a few dead ends and things through that section. Um, but the, the properties is, are owned by the city, or by the airport.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's an important thing to bring up and.
Well, that's in the last line, I, I, I didn't raise it because it's fair.
Okay.
By the way, you, you often use the word funnel just to be pig-headed. I, I prefer direct, you direct.
I often use it.
Yeah.
I think it's a waste.
Traffic and funnel direct, uh, development.
You used it two times.
That's often, maybe those are the two times.
Michael, how many times did you read this?
Maybe, maybe.
I didn't even know I was surprised.
Michael, you read it too many times.
No, I didn't read it too many times. Um, nevermind.
Okay.
Just, just to comment.
Continue to funnel Michael's.
I know.
Comments right into the.
My, my grandma.
Okay, we have a public comment.
I just, uh, Ryan Doyle, um, on, there are two places in this section on transportation, road transportation network. That mentioned the possible future exit on Heinsberg Road. Um, and we mentioned here that the highway really fragments South Burlington. And there are really not a lot of places to cross the highways to keep the city connected without going through. A highway crossing itself like exit fourteen or that weird Kennedy intersection. Um, and I think it's worth exploring some language that helps us talk about keeping access open. Or increasing access for local traffic, bikers and pedestrians to be able to cross the highway. And also food for thought that maybe Heinsberg Road, like an exit on it. Isn't necessarily as beneficial as an exit that is not on an existing crossing. But in the same vicinity, um, of the commercial developments that are on either side of the highway there. Um, because again, it would otherwise be cutting up Heinsberg Road and making it less accessible for. Vehicles and bikers and pedestrians to get into city center from that direction.
He's, uh, maybe the history, there was a lot of discussion about how, how to, uh, improve access from eighty-nine. Uh, and among them was fixing thirteen. So that it's a proper interchange, which, where we, where the, where we have the land available on both sides of I one eighty-nine. To put in whatever we want, in a way pedestrian or bike or, you know, whatever lanes. Twelve B was contentious and most of the city's committees preferred to fix thirteen. And also do some modifications on exit fourteen. Plus, we will have a bridge over the highway here, so, um. I think that's, your, your point is well-taken, but I think that there are opportunities if we can fix thirteen. Because we have the land on both sides of, a lot of land.
But, you know, I think just making the general point that access across the interstate is important.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Yeah.
Wherever possible to improve it and or.
Heinsberg Road is one of them.
Yeah, I think that that we should definitely.
And Route Seven. And Williston Road. Cause those, those, uh. Those roads bifurcate our communities. And Shelburne Road is a drag to get across.
Yeah, it is.
Um, I think you.
Is that?
Like you could go it. Yeah, especially if you're a pedestrian or a bike, bicyclist.
Yeah.
And, well, they made some good improvements in the crossings lately. They have made some good improvements, but.
Yeah.
Um.
The guy in the truck from Massachusetts doesn't know that.
Yeah, he doesn't know about that.
No, let's not talk about Massachusetts drivers.
It feels like South Burlington drivers don't even do the Dorset switch thing.
Um, so there's a little bit of that included, like calling out Patchen Road as a connection to sort of Burlington Winuski. Like, there's a little bit of that that's threaded through sort of street by street. I'm wondering if it would be something to, uh, include improving. Reducing fragmentation or something in sort of a higher level like umbrella into the objectives or into the introductions, something like that as a general statement.
Yeah.
So then when it's called out in individual streets, that's sort of, that's all connecting back to the beginning. Is that, with that in roll?
Yeah, I think that's great. Cause I mean, like you said, there's so many of those like big barriers.
Yeah, and, and in this section, we're talking about slowing traffic speeds. But we're also talking about the arterial roads going quickly. And then building side roads that are going slowly and. I want to see the arterial roads. Set up so that they go slowly for, for individual drivers. And have a bus lane or transportation lane for commercial. I want to incentivize people to get out of their cars and use other transportation. And every time we make one of the arterial roads faster and easier, we do exactly the opposite.
Yeah.
I'm stirring the pot here, but it's, it, it. Each time we add another lane, each time we speed up what's going.
Oh, I think there's no intention of.
I know there's no intentional lanes here, but I'm just saying, um, and at the top of. Um, I think the page on. It talks about new pedestrian and bike infrastructure investment in this corridor is critical. To connect residential areas like South Village, the city's commercial cores. Um, the bike pad overlay on the, on the city GIS map, it's fabulous, but. I would love to see this talk about creating interconnected bike transportation network. So that it's not just for recreation, but for recreation, definitely.
But that is one of the objectives. Um, the first objective, we, we call, I sort of structured as calling it complete the network. And we had one, um, member of the public in the transportation, uh, public conversation sort of talk about. The road network for cars is complete. You can go from here to anywhere you want to go. By car without running into significant obstacles. You might have to zigzag, you might have to, you might hit a lot of lights, you might have to cross the interstate at a certain place, but you can get there.
Yeah.
Um, the bike network is not complete, where there are places where you try to bike and then suddenly there's no more bike path, there's no more sidewalk, there's no more. Um, there's something that's uncrossable.
Yeah.
You can't, you can't bike on one anytime. You know, there's things like that. Um, so that was the intention of that first objective.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if that should be made more explicit.
The first objective, it's pretty clear.
Okay, maybe.
The other. The other thing, I don't know if there should be a, uh, instead of talking about vehicles, if we should talk about motor vehicles or not even motor vehicles, but. Cars and trucks as opposed to, because bikes really are vehicles, especially with e-bikes nowadays. I think e-bikes have the potential to totally transform commuting.
Yeah.
Three quarters of the year at least. And so these recreation trails of the trail network for bikes. Has a huge potential to impact the, the reduced vehicle travel and, and.
So, so what you're, so, you know, it sounds like you're using vehicle opposite ways in that state a little. So are you saying that an e-bike should be called a vehicle or should vehicles still be like cars and trucks?
I think that what we want to be doing is reducing cars and truck mileage.
Hmm, right.
But I think, but, but more and more as I'm walking on a bike path of, an e-bike feels like a vehicle.
It doesn't belong on a bike path, it belongs in a dedicated bike lane on the path of travel next to the vehicles, I think.
Something like that, but, but I just.
I, yeah.
If we all start going around on, on e-bikes, there're gonna actually be a lot more miles traveled because. They're individual units moving back and forth, which is a good thing. So when it talks about reducing. I don't want, I don't want the two to get conflated.
Do you think that for the purposes of the plan, we can let the word vehicle refer to like a.
Um.
And then.
Yeah.
Um, e-bike.
And bikes remain the bikes.
Into the bike category, would that be?
Yeah.
That feels like.
I can even include that and say.
Maybe say that somewhere.
We can, we, we consider electric bikes, you know.
Under the bike class.
As a, as a, as a bicycle. Um.
I feel like.
It requires some.
Ready to.
To draw that line.
Like, vehicles feels like.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not think throughout here, we, people understand and when we're talking about vehicles, we're talking about.
About.
Yeah, across a truck, so when we're talking about.
And it's tricky because like you can't actually say motor vehicles, because technically an e-bike has a motor, like it's a whole.
I think you should just say.
Yeah.
Just leave it the way it is, excuse me.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I, I, I did have kind of what Lena was talking about, um. If we call out, we don't, I'm just reading through the language, I think it'd be under strategies, we don't really call out like a bike lane or a, a non-vehicle travel lane. In our major corridors or on our streets. Seems like that's something that we want to try to get.
Yeah.
It's everywhere we can.
And, and the more that those light transportation lanes can be. Separate from next to a road. The more it will also serve as a recreation path. And we have the potential to have a recreation network in South Burlington that rivals Burlington Spike Path. And that connects to Burlington Spike Path. And that creates a big economic driver for, for South Burlington.
I think it's partly taken care of in the third bullet.
I do.
That, that those, those.
Are they strategic or an objective?
Objective.
Of purchase. Okay, that, I'm just thinking to make it, if, if we want to get people out of their cars. I, I just spent a lot of time in Boston and I was amazed, two major bridges going up the Charles River in Boston. Both were single lane with very wide bike lanes. And those bikes lanes got used a lot. I was amazed.
The more you make it hard for cars and make it easy for bikes.
And there was plenty of traffic. There was plenty of traffic, but the bike lanes were really on me. This is a two lane, you know, four lane bridge. Two lanes were taken out from automobiles and turned into bike lanes. Massachusetts can do it.
We could do it on your own road.
Paul and I were actually having a conversation related to all of this about. That a bike user is not a bike user is not a bike user where you have someone who is commuting and. I think we jokingly called them the spandex crowd where they're commuting and they're they're biking thirty miles an hour on certain in certain stretches. That user needs different things in in their network than the ten year old on their bike going to. With their box.
Yes.
So the and the the so-called spandex people would be more likely to be comfortable on an on-road bike lane like you're talking about over at Charles. And going sort of at traffic speed. Where you'll have other users who are still bicyclists, who are still bike users, who would not be comfortable in that kind of bike lane. So you. You kind of need all of these things. You need, we were talking about a bit about. Spear Street North. Well, no, not where you not where you are exactly.
I live at Spear Street.
Spear Street.
A lot of time on a bike.
Spear Street. No, there's when that's that's yes, that's.
I wear really flashy like we're gonna have lots of lights.
There you go. So you're the spandex person.
I wanted to see me funny.
Yeah, but north of one eighty nine, there's a pretty wide recreation path on one side. But there's a significant number of people who bike on on the road, on the shoulders of the road because of these things, because there are pedestrians and there are recreational users on the path. And people and runners on the path. And then people who are commuting or biking at higher speeds. Stay on the road. Because they don't want to hit anybody. So having needing to have the path separated from the road and and also. The bike lane on the street, not necessarily one is interchangeable with the other for all all types of users.
Or all types of roads.
Or all types of roads.
Keith and then Ryan.
I wanted to ask, have you already asked the bike and pet committee to give you back on this draft or are you planning to?
They get it after. So the draft goes from from staff to the planning commission. All of this feedback goes into another draft that then I send to the committees. And then feedback from the committees goes and the commission will review that in about a month and a half.
That's good.
Yeah.
That committee did host the public session on this, so they're already in the know.
Excellent.
And is it?
I think it's still going.
One more question related to something Lori said about the connection with the Burlington Bike Path. Is there something in the comp plan that specifically or in this draft that specifically says that it's important to us to make that connection?
It doesn't yet, but it can.
I think that's really important.
Really should.
It's such an obvious, really short section, actually.
The CCRPC just did a study on.
Oh, did they?
They just did a bike pit study from Shelburne Road to Oakledge Park.
Oh, awesome.
And Burlington's already just funded one of the sections of it.
Seems like a big missing link.
Okay, was that was that it? Okay, Brian?
Yeah, my question was. Regarding that first objective about completing the network for bike users. Is it? Effective to give a timeline or a goal date like the next one does? Or is there a strategy about mapping or making a list or creating priority? For which, like, how to do that in strategies yet, or has the committee already done that?
So something that's a little bit different between the sixteen plan and this plan is our intention with the twenty twenty four plan is that. This is kind of the big umbrella plan that then calls out the need for smaller plans and not smaller in like an importance, but just more specialized plans. So. Something that would be included as a strategy would be to do a bike pet master plan. So that would be what you're saying, doing the mapping, doing the prioritization, calling out like different sections and things would be part of that master planning process. And that would be something that we are going to be working on for the next draft to sort of put a little bit of a timeframe on, not anything sort of structured or like rigid. But say like. By twenty twenty eight, by twenty thirty, you know, do some of those things because the city is also, we're we're doing this for. Transportation, but also for a housing needs assessment and also for, you know, for different things. And trying to space those out sort of year over year so that the city isn't doing. Six two hundred thousand dollar studies in a single year. So that that is something that we'd be including. So so that kind of master planning process, the details. Don't go in this plan, but would end up in that in that process.
So that would something like a master plan would go into the strategies of this?
Yeah.
Cool, thank you.
And the bike pit. Already has an overlay for the for the GIS.
Yep.
And it's a fabulous map. Is there a way to have a link or either have the map? Connected with this, it's showing. How that network is trying to develop or is that getting too granular for this?
It can definitely be referenced. The actual sort of logistics of how to link it into the document probably. With a living. A living link like that, it would only be sort of through the PDF and not through a printed version, so it's a little bit tricky. But that kind of thing, our intention is to be referencing any and all external. Studies and maps that we. We also include sort of a snap sort of snapshot maps of like this is what it's like right now in the PDF itself. Is that what you're pointing out, Jessica, is the the old?
Oh, yeah. So we have, we did have a snapshot in the last one that has the existing and proposed. Cyclines and red paths. So just, you know, obviously they might change over time.
Lori, what are you referring to exactly? A specific map?
Yeah, if you go to DPW's website and look at their map section. There's a bike pit map which is overlaid on the GIS and it. It's a really good map.
Michael?
I just have a question on this, that under the multiple user types that. The sentence which starts with modifications. To accommodate these often more volume. Vulnerable users. I'm assuming that you're. Those are the ones listed above in the sentence before, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, just saying that pedestrian, pedestrians, scooter users and transit riders are often more vulnerable either by. Their circumstances or the fact that they're just more exposed on the road.
Okay, anything else in the multiple user type? We've already dabbled in this discussion.
I had a question on the next page. The paragraph which. The third one starts with our one major underdeveloped etcetera. You you said at the bottom that the city has received significant federal funding and is currently designing. I thought it's designed already.
No. There was a concept, the like technical design.
Design, the the design concept was approved by. The the people of this city.
Designing basically goes all the way until you break ground, break ground.
I had the same, the same question.
So that actually was language that was changed by our deputy director of capital projects to to that language. So I imagine she has a reason.
Well, maybe we should say it that the concept has been approved rather than it's in currently designing because there's. Isn't there, there's a timeline on that as well.
Can I say the designer is being finalized?
I will highlight that sentence.
Designing may be the same thing, but. You know, I think a lot of a lot of people who spend a lot of time at. At those sessions think the design is is done, the concept is done.
I will check with Erica about that and sort of. And it's also something that I will flag for. There's some things that are written into the draft. As a present status that could change in the next six months before this is actually adopted that I have to go back into later and like. Make sure that they're still accurate. So that's something I will flag.
You know, I didn't understand the next paragraph, the first sentence, which is the University of Vermont University Medical Center must be involved with pedestrian. And bicycle planning, especially along Spear Street and with east-west crossing where.
The east-west crossing is the bike bridge, bike pad bridge. That's the name of it.
They're gonna be involved with the design now?
No. The planning of addition, the pedestrian and bicycle planning. On routes that go between where their users live and where they work. So with with the east west crossing is not of the east-west crossing. Sort of with the connections to, I can I can add that for sure.
I didn't understand what their involvement might be.
Anything else on this multiple user type section? Okay, moving on to.
Yeah, Jessica, I have. Half dozen comments on this section and a pre-written statement. And I'd be allowed to deliver that address to you guys and ask.
Why don't you sit in the front here?
Sorry, I use the chairs to desk.
He's using, he's he's all set up. You don't need to move.
I can move the camera.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Now we can.
So. If. If it's appropriate for you guys, I would love to see some language that focuses on. Clear and unimpeded. To be used as language in this plan revolving around bike head access. I I live not too far from here. I I watch these meetings. And at some times of the year, there are just puddles just blocking the whole thing. Or holes set up in places that push you really close to the road. I think there's a lot that goes into something being clear, not just that it exists. So. Puddles, roots, gaps, vegetation, like. Sometimes site plans require developers to put in vegetation, which then grows into the trails. Like I have to pass several bushes that just come right out into it on my way here. Poles and also safe sight lines is an important thing in that. And then the other thing is the distance and buffering from traffic. That can play a really big impact on if a trail even feels safe or would invite someone to walk on it to get to a location. I can send language like that to you guys too, but that was. You know, puddles, roots, gaps, vegetation, holes, safe sight lines and distance and buffering from traffic. That's most critical actually at corners. Right now you can see where all of the tires suggest. Across where you're supposed to be waiting as a pedestrian. I cross a couple of those, the south side from Trader Joe's. Those corners are designed different than the ones on the north side. And so you see way more tire tracks going through it and you're actually pushing to a small five foot space where you have to be within five feet of that. Unraised curb. There's lots of little details like that that really affect people. Over the course of their journey as to if they will make that journey on foot or not. And I think it's worth giving it some language that people can later get into some details for that. Some stuff to think about as well as, you know, what the ADA considers as good wits. Probably aren't what we have in our regulations right now. They would say an eight foot sidewalk is what you need for two people to. Sign to each other while walking next. Side by side. And whereas most of our sidewalks are five feet if they're on the newer side of things. There's at the the bottom of the first paragraph of multiple user types, it says separated facilities are more welcome, welcoming etcetera. That goes to Lori's point earlier. Not just separated, but actually off of road or off of main arterial materials. Makes people feel way better about using those facilities. And so whenever there's the possibility to not just put. The path next to the road, but actually take it away even behind properties. And get the pedestrian access to commercial buildings that way can make people feel way more inclined to use those. There's a really interesting project in Seattle. It's called Aurora Drive. It's old State Route ninety nine. It's really dangerous. It's a strobe. There's lots of cars and not any great sidewalks. It sees thirty to forty thousand vehicles per day depending on what section of it you're in, similar to Williston Road. There's a street beside it called Linden Avenue. It has about four to five thousand AADT on it. And they've done a lot of work to make that to a really great. Space for bike head users to then bypass a lot of Aurora Ave. Ironically, Aurora Ave actually has the best transit ridership rates in the city of Seattle. It's way north of the city. We're talking about like eighty fifth avenue to like hundred and fifteenth. There's a lot of stuff online about this committee. I shouldn't say this committee, but the several different organizations that are working on it. That's. Interesting for those things, but getting people off those main roads are really important. Perceived safety and actual safety, there's kind of a note about that in there. And I think it'd be good for the council to spend a little more time discerning priorities on that. With it being safety over perceived safety. On the fourth page of the section, I was just asking for clarification from staff. It says to promote use and motivate user behavior change. Pedestrian and bicycle routes generally should follow direct travel routes rather than only paralleling road rate ways. And I was wondering if that got to that point of if.
It does.
People can get off those. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that's what it meant. Sorry, my notes are a little bit scattered. I did have a question for staff about how much of the Heinsberg rail bed. Do we know about or still in existence between Route seven and Dorset Street since that is was built at grade? For trains. I know some of it exists in the woods.
I don't know.
No.
Through Eastwoods, you mean?
I think so, yeah. Because we talk about that connection for bike head users. In that area, but there's often that hill that people cite discouraging use. So I'll just make that a staff question email. There's a section about the highway crossing. Engaging with UVM and MCU about. Some of those things. I did talk to staff several months ago about. The removal of sidewalks around the exits. And they said that they're going to leave all the the bike lanes and sidewalks around the exits so people have choices for use. I actually think it's much better for safety if we take the most dangerous roadways. And give safe options away like the east-west crossing and not leave the pedestrian and bike access. In those heavily dangerous areas. Bike head users are much more inclined to think about how much energy they're putting out when they're traveling places. And will take a very direct route if it's presented to them sometimes. I'll go safer, but a lot of people will see something straight and go for it. And by keeping those sidewalks and bike lanes there. Some people will keep going out into that really unsafe space. And so there's actually a few places where we'd want to just say instead of sidewalks on both sides and arterial, we would want none. And to have all pedestrian access be located behind buildings for their safety. Because it does say in this plan on both sides of the road, but. There are some places where it still invites people into places that were not making safer by changing. Driver behavior or speed or volume. And. My. Thing goes into the next part for. Transit services. I'm sorry, access management. So I'll just like hold some of my questions there for the next part.
I would also just point out the. You're making good points. Some of them are are more specific than would be in the comp plan. So the comp plan or the city plan level is more. You know, promotion of completing the network. Improve safety and and things that are sort of. Broad statements that cover a lot of instances and then specific things like the sidewalks on a specific street, like that's the sort of thing that would go into that master planning process. In the or or sort of future work as this is implemented.
Yeah, especially the highway stuff is specific, but it does say to put sidewalks on both sides of all arterials. And I think that's a bit of an absolute statement given that doesn't necessarily prioritize safety in all cases.
So one of the things he brought up and it came up at the public meeting too is kind of that idea of clear and unimpeded. You know, ice puddles, holes, like vegetation sightlines, kind of, you know, what he listed. I'm not seeing in here, I don't know that necessarily goes in this exact section here, but it is. It is a big deal for multiple users and it did come up. There was a big discussion about that.
I think it actually lives. I think it actually lives in two places, I think it definitely lives here, um but it also would live in the um. Sort of community services, sort of the role, the role of D P W, the role of sort of our city government in providing some of that maintenance. Um would be sort of both here in this topic area, but also in the community facilities and services section, that was one of the first.
And then just to kind of highlight one of the things that he just brought up is the ADA piece. You know, it feels a little weird to have a section called multiple user types and then not say anything about ADA in design. Like it feels like that's something that would maybe go in here, even if it is somewhere else too.
I had a question. You made, you made a point about the, the problems at the intersections at Trader Joe's. Is, is there, is on the south side, is that an issue of, of the wrong radius? That cars are driving, I noticed cars are driving over the sidewalk when they turn in there.
I don't know if it's actually the radius itself. If you look at the north side, the differences that I see just in that. Specific example that I walked through to get here is that there are poles located very close to the road. On those north intersections, drivers recognize this and have a greater sense of avoiding it because it's at their face level. Whereas curbs don't provide as much visual cue to a driver who's maybe looking at other things. And so on the south side, the poles are actually behind the sidewalk. So if I'm turning into Hannaford, I'm like squeezing between the pole and a car. But the driver feels like they have space from it, so they might just cut that curb. Especially since there's so much low area where it's at grade for the hole. It's not just um to cut across and come up and then.
Do we have a good process, like it says something that like you or I should pass on like Tom to Pietro and T P W and just. Say we're seeing something weird here as a newer intersection, we.
Yep, we're happy with them.
On the north coming in from the north side, they have to cross the line of traffic and there's much more space they can't cut.
So Paul, let's, let's hear from Paul now, because I think we're gonna, it's not really our purview, even like a comment on.
Just a, a little quick update that um our public works department is actually in the process of uh developing a. Formalized procedure by which people can either identify little changes that need to happen, like you know, a uh. Uh sidewalk is needing ADA in their area or um needs for improvements. Uh so that it goes through a formalized. Review system to really um make it a lot more um connected back to the request. Uh and our public works department actually presented the first draft to city council of that last week. So um I think that there is a uh structure and system being put in place to look at things like this and or. Traffic calming, et cetera, et cetera.
That's so cool. As a strategy um going forward, um it might be very helpful to develop. Uh standards so that when those things go in, that there is a lot of, of that thought put in for the pedestrians. More so than has been, even though that's a pretty new intersection, right? Um so that we have those design standards for them to follow, so we don't have to retroactively. Go through this new system, that's very cool and I very much appreciate uh public works working on.
And I would say for commissioners, the, the big picture of that statement that was just made. Is what should be in the comprehensive plan. You know, that we're designing streets to do the following and then the how it gets accomplished becomes the. Um you know, the policy work afterwards, but setting the vision, this is appropriate.
All right, transit services.
So the second line of transit services. Says development of city center will increase the need for public transit routes and frequently. Frequency in the Williston Road area. And that's where my comment fits in about possible shuttle corridors. So routes or shuttle corridors that just are back and forth.
Both Williston and Sheldon.
Yeah.
Interconnection in the city.
And not having to go on a whole.
Anything else on this one? Access management, anything on this page or air transportation, we can kind of use your shorter sections.
I had something on access management. The more the system is used for higher vehicle speeds. The word encourage, encourage single occupancy transportation, et cetera. So it says Kennedy Drive and Kimball epitomize a reasonable configuration of an arterial highway. I love the idea that um the Duncan was talking about, about. The bridges in, in Massachusetts having two lanes for bicycles and one lane for cars. Kennedy Drive is a really fast road. And if that's the model we're setting up, that model creates bifurcation. Because it's a road you can't cross and it's a road where people are going really fast. And so. Uh to me, it's not a great model, even though this says that it epitomizes a reasonable configuration.
I think it might be only talking about curb cuts in this particular instance. Like the idea that there isn't a curb cut up for every building, they've been trying to like. Kind of limit the number of times you turn on and off directly is what is I. So I agree, I think that it's maybe not a perfect road, but I think it's.
The longer stretches without driveways or without possible incoming.
Yeah.
Motor vehicles is sort of what this is getting to, it's doesn't really say. That what the configuration of the bike lane on the street should be, it's just that it, it, it is safer if you're not facing a new driveway every hundred feet.
Well, it allows you to go faster. Of all those, it's safer for a bike. But what it does for the, for the traveling vehicles is it speeds them up. So when you have Kennedy Drive without any curb cuts, people could fly.
Kennedy Drive was originally conceptualized as continuation of I one eighty-nine.
I understand, but I'm just saying. So it's, it's, yeah, I, I understand safety. But safety also comes from slowing cars down and when you get rid of curb cuts, cars speed up. So I don't know how to handle that.
I think we talk about traffic calming, like as a separate thing, like this is a paragraph very specific to curb cuts. But there is, it is true, we don't want people going faster and we do want to have traffic calming.
I mean, Kimball is a bad example. Drove down Kimball with my wife and said every couple hundred yards, there's a curb cut. In advance of what, whatever was planned or not planned. And I noticed that we had access management as one of the things in the two thousand and sixteen plan, but I'm not sure we did it. We used it in any way.
So it is an ongoing process. I'll just leave it with that, there's, there is work being done.
But those curb cuts on Kimball aren't unnecessary because there's nothing there, so maybe they should be.
Yeah, uh so when we talk about through and two streets, there's a term for that, we call it a strobe. Uh strobe is, you know, the combination of street and road. It's recent, it was coined like, I don't know, a decade ago as a term, uh but it's very popular right now. And we're looking at something that's supposed to function vehically as a road that serves a high volume, high speed of. But also have street-like functions, like having people and lots of small businesses close together. And a strobe basically tries to provide for both and doesn't make either of them very well or safely. And we see that in our safety data among places like Williston Road or um Route seven closest to one eighty-nine. And I think it's worth being very specific and identifying those places as having very mixed purposes. And we do have some places in here where we talk about making Williston Road look more like a place that's. You know, urban and has streets, but we're, you'd have to more than have the amount of traffic on it. To do so, you'd have to spend fifty to sixty million dollars to do something like that. And it's such a low quality area to make pedestrian friendly anyway. That it doesn't feel very worth it for what we want to invest in as a city center. Even places that are north of Williston Road that we've identified we want to invest in in the future. Lots of downtowns, great downtowns have bad roads running through them. The difference is making sure that we can cross them, but never have to walk along them. Um and there is literature about that, I would like to share with you guys at some other point and not give my big long speech. But I do want to bring that up as something that is discussed often in uh bigger cities who. You know, do have more, you know, staff and resources, but is definitely something that plagues us as a suburban type city.
You know, um thi- this might be like a statement to like pretty specifically call out right in the road transportation network. Spot where we talk about a lot of these arterial roads, they're really trying to serve two purposes, just that idea of two purpose. I don't know how trendy we need to be with this road, but um. Just that concept is really important. So like make sure it's.
Sections serve different purposes, but saying all the whole thing serves multiple purposes.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, anything on air or rail? Okay, then we might be able to move to housing, it's getting late. So are we, and we have, so just as a check in on our agenda, I could do a bad job tonight. It is nine oh four, um we have only gotten to eight, but we skipped six, so. We still have the housing section review, the report on the city council changes. To the L D Rs that I think we actually have to get back to them.
That should be fairly.
Yeah, it should be short, but we seem to not always do that. And um and then getting back to the new language for six, so.
Oh, you know, they, he does have.
Yes, I saw the screens, so I think that. I don't know, we're not the best at getting through these comp plan sections quickly, so I guess I'm just not totally sure what to do with the agenda right now. We forge on and just.
Who has comments on the house?
Okay.
I had a few short comments.
We have lots of comments. I guess we can just forge on, stay on track. Okay, how is it? Start with him. Okay, well, if he doesn't, no one has to give any.
I'll just do them as we go down.
So starting on the first page.
In the first paragraph, it talks about supporting economic development. And I question. Whether we want to talk about economic stability as opposed to development. Continuing group, continuous growth is going to be an ongoing problem. And at some point, we need to look at how do we feel comfortable with the size we are and keep it. Stable and staying healthy, but. Growth. Gets out of control and how much do we want development as opposed to. Prosperity and stability and.
I, I'm not totally sure I agree with you on that, but. I, I, I can kind of see your point, but I, I think economic development is very important to many people in the city.
I think it is very important to, to a lot of us. And it's a big cause of the environmental crises that we're facing. And how do you balance that, you balance?
Can we just say economics and not be specific to development versus existing stability?
I should keep, what did you say?
Nice job, Keith. Anything else on um?
I just had a question for. Yeah, and the page on these.
Oh, second, uh, are we going to the next page?
He's going to next page.
I got one more on this page.
Okay.
Just quickly, Dan, where it's talking about overall housing supply and cost are critical to maintaining a healthy, varied and supportive community. I'm, I'm gonna, I just wrote here blasphemy. Are we willing to discuss and possibly promote residential tower development? And I'm bringing that up because uh it would fit very well in the city center area. Provide dense housing and low cost and low environmental impact. This is a dense development model that's worked well in many areas. Getting affordable housing. Is a real problem and one of the ways a lot of places on the globe have solved that is with towers. And.
I'm sorry.
Towers, tower development. You know, you could put a fifteen or twenty story tower or two in the U mall parking lot that would house. A thousand people or more.
Lots of green space between.
With lots of green space in between them, very low footprint, very low. Energy used because of the efficiency of a tower construction. It's not Vermont vernacular, I realize.
I guess I'm not following the.
You're talking about the paragraph for an objective.
Yeah, the last paragraph before objectives. It's talking about housing supply and I'm just saying, I'm bringing up the concept. Affordable housing has been a, a big buzzword. And doing it with little residential developments has not been very effective. And I've never seen or heard our communities talk about the possibility of a tower.
I am.
I'll give Michael credit for that.
So I just want.
That's what I'm looking for north of Williston.
I just want to bring that back into the conversation.
Is there a change to that paragraph? I guess I'm not following.
That, that sounds more, that'd be. Too, too detailed for what we're doing here.
Also, it involves a lot of, a lot of zone changing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we could, you know, somewhere in here, I don't know that it goes right there, I think we should consider.
Well, Paul is raising his hand.
Oh, Paul, go ahead.
Um a suggestion, I'm not sure where exactly it goes, whether it's in this section or if it goes into the land use chapter, but. I, I'm hearing what's being said and maybe we're putting words to something that South Burlington to a certain extent has decided, which is that. Inappropriate locations, the city is, you know, we'll, we'll find the right words exactly, but not afraid of height as part of the, as part of the toolbox of solutions.
Okay.
Um you know, some, something along the lines of, you know, to, to, to state that as, as an affirmation that. You know, as we've been doing Long Shelburne Road and, and Williston Road and possibly even more so, that. That that can, that that can be part of our landscape of the future. But I think also being careful to say that inappropriate locations, so that we're not, you know.
Yes.
Implying to say that there should be a thirty story tower in off country club estates or something.
Maybe reconsider the, the, the five story height limitations. That, you know, that should be re, revisited or, or reconsidered in, in the strategy.
Okay, Sandy, you had your hand up?
I look at this first section as sort of introductory. And I also am reflecting on where, as I recall it, we were in twenty sixteen. Or actually probably twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, when we were doing the twenty sixteen plan. And I see that we're in a very different place. And nowhere here does it say, the word housing crisis doesn't appear. Uh there is nothing about the, the historically unprecedented low vacancy rate. Uh there is nothing about how average rents and average. For sale prices have skyrocketed in the past few years. There's nothing here about short-term rentals, it's later, but it's not talking about those things that are creating this. Unprecedented situation, we have three thousand, this is statewide, but people living in motels and the. That doesn't necessarily. that doesn't necessarily have to be in here. There's nothing in here about the effects of the pandemic. And I was also listening to some testimony at the State House today. And one of our problems, which is a lot related to the pandemic, is not just short-term rentals, but people buying second and third homes. Where they come up here and live for not very long, and the the house stands empty for the rest of the year. Nothing in here about people turning down jobs because there's no housing appropriate to their needs. And I, and I also think it's more than just middle and lower income. I would say there's a a lack of housing that's well matched to people that are sort of upper-middle. I think the only people that can deal with this housing market are the the really high-income with any success. So, I mean, this reads pretty much, well, I see, has recently intensified. That doesn't communicate how different the the situation is today from how it was when we were writing the last plan. And and I think, you know, to read this ten years from now, it it simply just would not reflect the conditions. So I certainly encourage a relook at the introduction to be a little close and provide some specific numbers to just really say the challenge we have to deal with and its effects. You know, we're paying millions on the statewide basis to pay for people living in motels and 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 we're about to stop that program. So anyway, it just doesn't match up with reality to me. So that's my.
Yeah, no, that's great, Sandy. And you know, I I see, you know, some of the things you pointed out kind of come later, maybe the specific numbers. But maybe we can make sure all those specific numbers are definitely in there and beef up the introduction to like make sure that the the crisis is clear right up front.
It's a shortage.
Yeah.
It's a terrible shortage.
Terrible shortage. Okay, um, anything else moving through?
I don't know if this stuff is relevant to the plan, but some kind of a strategy that talks about looking at how other communities have addressed this in the past or right now. And because they, there are other strategies, cooperative housing, for example, starts at market rate. And after fifty to twenty years, it's much below market rate, and that helps places like Vienna have rent that's half as much as it is in South Burlington. Or you can Vancouver, keep their rents down, so.
Not in Vancouver. Not Vancouver.
If you get a cooperative apartment in Vancouver, you could be spending forty, fifty percent less on rent than a commercial apartment building. So there's lots of these other things. Some communities make plans for if you are a developer, you want to build housing. You have these predetermined plans that you can build for a couple of years, move really fast through the perfect process. And that not just like what the community thinks looks good, accommodates the spaces or other city goals well, so that it can help us reduce some of that upfront cost. This is something that says that we want to look at other solutions that are out there and try to see how we can adopt those things or make legislation that makes them possible, because there's, you know, dozens more.
Yeah, and I think at this point, we don't have the objectives or strategies on this one yet, so that can be one of our. Anything else going through, Michael?
I had a question on the next page where you write significant continued investment in additional housing is necessary to address residential construction costs.
Where are we?
It's the.
Second paragraph from the next.
Second page. Right above housing.
Significant continued investment in additional housing necessary.
With the word meet in place of to address.
Isn't this.
Mitigate?
Meet, I think.
Why would addition, I mean, how's this, costs are, construction costs are construction costs, doing more won't cost less. Unless you're talking about going from single-family to multifamily, then yes.
Or smaller sizes.
Or smaller, yeah.
Maybe you get rid of the word construction.
Yeah, I got rid of construction costs.
Costs.
Well, costs, yeah, just get rid of construction.
Paul, did you write this sentence? I'm not remembering if this was a section that you added, and if you've had any insight.
Uh, which, remind me which page we're on exactly.
Page two of the housing, right above where it says housing laws.
Maybe.
It's the last sentence of the previous section.
Oh, yeah.
Because it feels like construction costs are fixed, but residential costs might not be.
Yeah, significant continued investment in housing is necessary to address residential, to address costs, I mean.
Yeah, I think I I I agree with what commissioners are saying here. It's not necess, I think, construction was just. Yes, the the word construction is superfluous there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we are on the third page of the housing section.
Yeah, well, I I there, I made a note, the same thing that Sandy mentioned, which is in a vacation home, second homes, third homes is a a problem because that's taken out of the market. And I don't think we have a strategy to deal with that. We've we've talked about it by using punitive taxes, for example, which is what happens in Vancouver. And it's been very effective. I know people who, that they're, who don't live there all the year. They sold their houses because they couldn't act the massive taxes that they were, because if you don't live there for a hundred and eighty-three days or something, I can't remember the number, then your taxes are like triple your property taxes. So it's a very, very effective tool to solve a very difficult problem.
Um, I'm I'm happy to include sort of in the areas adjacent to short-term rentals, that subject area. I think somewhat similar to short-term rentals. We are, I don't know if fortunate is the right word, but our circumstances are that we don't have a a huge number of them in South Burlington as compared with a place like Stowe of places that are second homes for folks. But we can acknowledge the the issue and be tracking it.
Michael, you you talking about Airbnb?
Both Airbnb is or isn't.
I'm saying like second homes that aren't usually, I don't think we have a ton of those here, like say Stone Wood or.
No, we don't have that many, but it's a, I'm sure it's a regional problem for Chittenden County.
I like Paul's idea of tracking it. You know, it feels like we might just know, and part of what Sandy was saying earlier is it might have been a little bit changing as people maybe move. Sandy, you want to go ahead?
I was just gonna say, is Donna there?
Donna is not here.
I know she's talked about this phenomenon in the village at Dorset Park. I know people in Burlington. It's not just the resort resorts. Uh, and I think the pandemic contributed to it. It's not gigantic, but unfortunately, it's every little thing impinges, you take out a a year-round housing unit off the market, and I mean unavailable, and there you, you know, your supply shrinks.
To your point, Duncan, Airbnb, there, we we know of people who bought houses in South Burlington for those express purposes.
See, that 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 I have an issue.
Oh, and they don't live in them, they just rent them out.
I agree with that. I think second home orders, that's tougher, because somebody legally bought that house.
Yeah, I know.
Funds, they want to live there.
That's fine, but if you don't live here, you in that house, then maybe we can encourage them to go somewhere else.
Okay, so anything else on here?
Yeah, it's a, it's been something that bothered me for a long time, and that is the the HUD new call method of assessing a family income, an AMI, you know, that a that a family of four um, had, has a, where are we here? A hundred and twenty percent of AMI, their their income is a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Or at eighty, or at a hundred percent, it's ninety-five thousand dollars or ninety-six thousand dollars. That that it doesn't work that way, because you can have a family of four with only one breadwinner. And that's going to be in the sixty thousand dollar range for the average of Chittenden County. So I've always had a problem with how how to make this work. Because that that family that has one breadwinner, but is a family of four, is a mother and two children who's at home. So they don't earn ninety-five or a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
So I, um, the sort of general practice, it seems, is to use the family of four as the unit and and using the numbers from from the federal government, yeah. As a way to provide some context for some of these issues without including the full table. Um, because there's a full table of of the median income, and if you're one person or two people, and it goes up to nine or ten people in a family. So without including the whole table, that's sort of a way to proxy a household, an average household, is to choose the the household of four. It's just, it's more, this whole paragraph is more to illustrate how the disconnect between what is available at certain price points and what is expected to be affordable for sort of what the federal government would say is average. It's not intended to say like every family of four should should make ninety-six thousand, or every family of four, like kind of four twenty-four hundred dollars a month. It's it's just using it as an example case.
Doesn't it in the end translate into the price of the house? That a developer will look at these.
For permanently affordable numbers?
Yeah.
Yes.
So they can't, they can't build a house for a family of four that makes sixty or sixty, sixty or seventy thousand dollars, because they can't.
It would, they can, um, these are the numbers that are used for determining different levels of permanent affordability. Um, you can have very low income, like there's other terms that are used.
Yeah, because the thirty percent then translates into twenty-one hundred, not twenty-six or seven hundred.
Sure, so Paul wants to weigh in.
Uh, ju- just a thought that we can get pretty good data from the census to complement this, to discuss. So, um, you know, we either in this section or in the general population section, some of the characteristics of our population in terms of how many single uh, single-parent households, for lack of a better word than that, there are versus two income earners. To sort of put some framework around this conversation, I hear what you're saying, Michael, that the data is imperfect, that it implies that the more people in a household, that it always means more uh, income. Um, and the median suggests that, but the median medians don't represent everybody, that they represent the middle point point. So, um, you know, maybe a little bit of context about our population characteristics would help with that.
Maybe a table instead of this paragraph would be more appropriate.
Maybe, or, you know, maybe this is something just for staff to maybe look at, and then also maybe flag for the for pretty affordable housing committee, maybe to also take a look at.
Yeah, I feel like there's sort of two ways you can go with this paragraph. You can either give it more data or less. You could go with more data and add some, add more detail to the population section and or add, make this a whole table. Or make it more about the policy statements that that we are not meeting the affordability needs of our population and take sort of out some of the specific data to make the policy statements more more obvious.
Or as Paul said, make it more specific to the conditions which prevail.
Yeah.
Yeah, in South Burlington.
The last paragraph actually has a sentence which pretty much says that we need to do what the gentleman earlier asked us to do. Our growth, uh, we need to increase density and enable indoor development within existing neighborhoods to meet the demand for additional housing units without constructing greenfield areas. That's pretty much what he was.
Yep.
So that's telling us to do.
Yep.
Yeah.
What we need to do.
Francis, did you have your hand up?
I have a question about the the South Burlington Housing Trust Fund. How is it funded? Where does, where does the money come from?
Paul, can you speak specifically?
Yeah, uh, currently, it is, uh, comes directly from the general fund, so it is, it is a line item in the budget that is just like the, um, you know, equipment budget for uh, fire department or staff budget for planning and zoning. It's a line item in the city manager's or city council's budget for fifty thousand dollars a year. Decided year by year by council.
Yeah. Do we, because the other cities have a different way of of doing it, and at least I've heard that Philadelphia is is very effective in that. There's a I can't remember what the percentage of the value of the property, but for every, every new property, whether it's residential or commercial, there's an impact fee or or of six percent or whatever, and that goes into the the city's housing fund for the construction of affordable housing.
Yeah, there's a number of different tools that could be looked at, the, you know, the the conservation slash open space fund, or the Penny for Paths is a direct fund from the called-out from the voters. This one is a line item in the budget, so there's lots of different ways it could be done, and if, um, you know, I think at the level of the plan, the question maybe could be the extent to which the city should be a financial participant in future housing.
Anything else? Okay, we're nearing the end of housing. Anything else on the whole section? Okay, awesome. So we can move on to item ten, which is the Planning Commission Report Update. Are these usually addressed to Donna, the city clerk? Is that correct?
Uh, to you and to Donna, yes. Under state law, the city clerk and the planning commission must both get it if there's a change made by the planning commission, but by the city council.
That's why it came back to Donna, because it came back from the council.
Okay, okay, so this is truly to us. Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Um, and I did attend the, I didn't see during announcements because it's related to this, but, um, Michael and I both attended the city council meeting last week. Um, they had a great, robust discussion. They seemed pleased with our language that we had kind of sent back to them in the comments. They really appreciated us taking another look. And now this is the, the process is that because they made a change to the language from the original ones that we sent, state law is that we have to update our report, make sure that the new language is in in line with the comp plan. And that's what staff has provided here.
Right, so our assessment is that it doesn't change your report, so if you agree with that, then the motion would be to reaffirm the original report.
So moved.
Do you need an actual motion?
Yes.
Yeah, we need.
Yeah, it is a required action under state law that you update the report, so.
I know it was written down.
The language is in here somewhere.
Yeah.
Yes.
Where is it?
Okay, I have second page of the memo.
Did you, you said you were gonna move. Do you want to read that?
I move to affirm that the proposed changes to the draft land development regulations made by the city council on April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three do not alter the planning commission's report approved on December eighth, twenty twenty-two.
One second.
Okay. Is that confusing that Duncan seconded the I move and then Laurie seconded? Okay, okay, so Laurie seconded. Okay, any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
That was unanimous. Okay, so we have. That was unanimous, okay, so we have minutes from April eleventh.
Yep, and I.
Oh, actually, before we move on from this, um, so this, this agenda, is it, it's this week? Is the, when is this back on the city councils?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth, I believe. Paul might be coming.
It's May fifteenth.
Yeah, Paul is bringing the updated language for the other.
Okay, so I ask, because I'm, I'm away on May fifteenth, and we like to have somebody.
I'm back, I'll be back on the ninth.
Okay, would you, would you be willing to go to the city council meeting in case there are questions? That would be super great. So now, April eleventh minutes.
We, oh, you're doing that.
We're doing minutes, because we.
So I did, um, did everyone get my email today that I circulated Michael's couple of edits to the minutes?
Yes. So the minutes don't need to be perfect, they need to convey. Generally, what we.
Yep.
But they are not a line by line exact words.
No, but.
Just to point out.
Second, top of the second page, it says developer provided recreation. And I was talking about developed parks, not developer provided recreation, the difference between developed parks and undeveloped parks.
Do you wanna say?
Section was talking about developed parks. As opposed to developer.
What page?
Top of the second page.
Actually, the third.
Third page.
Top of the third page, Mr. Smith noted that almost everything in this section is. What it says is quote, develop, developer provided recreation, and he wants to change it to developed parks.
Developed parks, yeah, so not recreation that was created by developers.
Problem is, that's not what he said.
Excuse me?
Uh, Sue, Sue, um, has the, went from the recording and is saying, you, you must have said the words. Developer provided recreation.
That's exactly what the words were.
Okay.
What you intended.
It was not what I intended to say, if those were the words, because we were talking about developed parks versus undeveloped parks.
Okay, um.
In the previous, yeah.
But.
Yeah.
I don't know what to do about that.
I'm gonna stay, because I wasn't here, so. I don't have to do anything.
I don't have a vote.
I wasn't here, so.
You still get to vote.
I'm abstaining.
You don't have to abstain, uh, I don't know, I'm not sure what, minutes are always hard.
I mean, I can stay the way it is, it's just, it wasn't what I was talking about.
If you wanna state now that it wasn't what you meant in those meeting, it would be in these minutes. So something, you can subsequently say, no, I said that in those minutes, but then see the minutes of this meeting to say that, that's not really what I meant.
Okay, that's, that's, that's fine with me, I just, what's written there is not what was meant, whether it's what I said or not.
Okay, Sue, does that seem reasonable to just have the record of this discussion in the minutes for this?
Here, one of my problems is, it, it is very hard to hear you guys in this location. Because you do not have microphones.
Okay, and my accent doesn't help.
You yell, Michael, so you can hear your mic.
It's not your accent, it's, it's the room and the fact that if you turn to talk to somebody. Uh, it is very, very hard to hear specific things, particularly the gentleman in the audience. Uh, in this location.
Okay, that's good feedback.
Yeah.
Maybe that's something that can pass on to IT, maybe there's a way to somehow have some distributed mics.
Some of you have very lovely low voices, but, uh, it's, it's hard to, to hear specifics, yeah.
I will, I will note that, um, we'll talk to IT about the possibility of having an additional microphone, or a, or a past microphone or something.
Hey, Sue, you know we have two Mr. McDonalds here, right?
I am aware of that.
All right, just wanna make sure that Francis doesn't say something wrong if it gets attributed to me.
We are going to deal with that, yes.
This is our first double McDonald's meeting, so exciting.
Think of that far, but.
I only realized when I sent emails.
I only realized right this second. Makes sense. Okay.
I've got one more change on the bottom of the next page. Where Mr. Smith suggested something about neighborhood national parks. What I had tried to, if I didn't say, was I was hoping that it would be incorporated into the plan. The same way the raise the blade program is incorporated into the plan, as something that could be aspired to.
Okay. Are we?
That's it for me.
Okay. Um, any discussion, other discussion on the motion?
Okay, with, with my changes are okay?
Yeah, yours are in there.
They were circulated today, they were not circulated in the packet.
Oh, oh, okay, yes, so that's what we, that was what your motion was. Did your motion include the circulated language?
Yes.
Okay.
If.
Good, so all in favor?
Hi.
I'm abstaining.
One abstain. Very good, pass. So, we added other, under other business, number six, which was the. Discuss possible vote on LDR, that's actually not what it is, on. LDR twenty-three oh one and. Oh two. And we have some new draft language based on our earlier discussion, and I believe. Someone's gonna tell us about it.
Hey folks, okay, so I handed out a sheet that has some updates in it. Um, just a, as a quick key, I'm also showing it on the screen. The things in blue highlight are the changes that the city attorney had made before the meeting, so I'm just making sure that those are tracked. Um, there are two cha- uh, I guess three areas where there's little changes. Um, the first two that you're seeing on the first page are actually, um, not as a result of your. Public hearing conversation, but as, uh, I was looking through it with, uh, and thank you Keith Epstein. We noticed that the language in one A and two. Um, was sort of reflective of the old way that you were gonna be talking about it last month. When you were talking about what does it mean to maximize the solar potential, so I just updated that to. Um, match the language directly under B, where you defined maximizing being the area of the solar ready zone. Employing typical solar VP panel configurations, just so that we're consistent throughout, so that's not a policy change, it's just being more consistent. And then on page two, um, that's the cha- this is the change based on your discussion. So it adds a title, submission requirements, the application for zoning permit shall include. And then it says certification by qualified professional of the existing expected building usage and the anticipated generation. And then as applicable, a written statement from the relative, relevant utility. Uh, or other evidence sufficient to determine the extent to which. Uh, the requirement of a system is reduced, so. Uh, I'll say that Keith and I looked at a couple of different versions of this, of a much more elaborate version. Um, and felt that a simple version that refers back to the standard as to. On page one, where the standard actually lives, is all that is necessary for a submission requirement. So I feel good about this, if you do.
Um, do you, should it, should that last one also include four?
B four.
So B four, do we need something to document that?
Um, the, the, um, I think that the documentation of that takes place within the commercial building energy standard. So what, what B four is trying to do, and you talked about this briefly before, was that. If you provide non-site removal energy system, you're alleviated from doing a rooftop one. I, I feel. I mean, I guess if you wanted to say, if you wanted to say, uh, B one, one, two. And four, I'd be comfortable with that, too. Uh, we did.
Me too, if you think it's fine, maybe B four is just fine. Okay, no change. I'm not suggesting a change.
So now, can, can we incorporate? These changes now?
You can, yes, it's, you can make any changes you want following the public hearing.
You can send it to city council now.
Right, and the action that you took earlier in the meeting to table it to now means that that action, item number six is now live with you. So if you wish to take action now to submit it to council, you can, or you can think about it and talk about it at your next meeting.
I've sent it to council.
I'm hearing a lot of grumbling, I think somebody should move, make the move. Um, I can do it, okay, so I move to approve amendments to the land development regulations, LDR twenty-three oh one and LDR twenty-three oh two. With the proposed changes presented in this meeting's packet, as well as the updates, um, written out as part of the meeting. To approve the planning commission report and submit full to the city council.
I second that.
Okay, any discussion?
Those are the LDR twenty-three oh one and twenty-three oh two.
Yep, yep.
Any, any comment from anyone else? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
That was unanimous. Have everyone, we did it, so, um, do we need to talk about our upcoming meetings, Kelsey, we've been doing a poll?
Yes, um, so what was originally on the schedule for the May ninth meeting would be the first look at the sections of. Land use, so the, all the geographic areas of the city and future land use in general. Um, both Jessica and Michael are gone on May ninth. Um, so it is not ideal to have two of the longer standing members of the. Planning Commission, including the chair, be gone for that first sort of discussion of that section. Um, there's a couple of options. I don't know what. Jessica and Michael's travel situations are between May ninth and May twenty-third, if Jessica, are you on that whole stretch? Okay.
All the Tuesdays, it's.
Well, so, the, the other option is to tr- to do it a Thursday, a Wednesday or Thursday. Either the tenth or the eleventh, or the Wednesday or Thursday of the week following.
I said you need me out earlier, Chelsea, did I tell you I was available that week?
Yes. Okay.
Yeah, the.
Then there's another reason not to have it on the night.
Sorry.
I said.
I totally lied to you, Chelsea.
You told me you were not available on the thirtieth, is that correct, May thirtieth?
I do not think I'm available the thirtieth, but I.
That's the only one that you told me.
Okay, well, I'm sorry.
So Duncan lied to me.
So it sounds like.
Sounds like there's no war.
Um, I don't, I have not heard from Donna. But.
Said she was away.
She's way harder than. I feel like maybe we should just move the ninth to the fifth Tuesday, maybe, is that?
So that's the.
The one you said you couldn't come.
So that's the other option, is to move it to May thirtieth.
Uh, we've got one on May thirtieth already.
No, we have one on May twenty-third. So the second and fourth Tuesdays of May are the ninth and the twenty-third.
Your email said.
Yeah, it was an option.
It was a poll.
The emails, the thirtieth, the thirtieth was included in the email as an option, uh, that we discussed, because there are five Tuesdays.
So we're gonna can the ninth and do the thirtieth.
That's, that's the option being proposed.
Duncan, are you not here the thirtieth?
I don't, I, there's a possibility, it could be that, that, I don't know, the other week I told you I was here, I don't want to, I was thinking.
Okay, well, let's just get rid of that May ninth.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll, we'll cancel May ninth.
What about doing it on the sixteenth?
That was, Jessica is also not.
I'm still gone, I'm gone on all three of those Tuesdays, so.
Are you back on the twenty-third?
No.
Okay.
So the.
You can carry on.
Were the Wednesday, Thursday actions, options, I thought, no.
So my proposal was possibly to do, to have a meeting on the twenty-third. And I understand Fran is also not available on the twenty-third, but have that be the review of updated sections? So that would be up, the updated sections, updated versions of community services, energy, economy, and water and public utilities. Would be on the twenty-third. And that the thirtieth would be the first discussion of future land use. And then, um, kind of back on track, have some more updated sections on the June thirteenth. Still, still crossing my fingers for the full draft being reviewed on the twenty-seventh.
Why do you want to do something different on, on May? Twenty-third to what was originally gonna be done on May the ninth?
Um, because we still have at least two commissioners confirmed. Right, so removing, and the, and I am less. Uh, I am more comfortable with having a review of an updated section that you then will see again and again through the draft. The further drafts, when there are fewer commissioners, I would like to have as many commercial commissioners as possible for the first reading of the land use.
And then use one is the, the one. Need for me.
I'll also add on Kelsey's behalf that this schedule, um, as you've just discussed, does give staff a little more time to, um, refine. That, uh, that land use chapter, and really sort of let all the feedback that you provided so far sink in, so that we can really have a good first draft for you.
You also, you also need three weeks to come, to recover your voice, get over your call.
By three weeks, now the next one will be here.
So, May twenty-third. Yeah, that's how it would, that's how it currently stands with some.
So in dispute and.
Is, just a quick question, is there a different day the week of the thirtieth, Duncan, that you would be available?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Would you be available like June?
Yeah, later in the week would probably be.
If we moved it to Thursday, June first?
That may be available for me.
Okay. Wednesday, the thirty-first, I'm gonna negotiate.
That's more of a possibility, the thirtieth, I think.
May the thirty-first?
May thirty-first is a Wednesday.
Memorial Day and all that stuff.
Memorial Day is that Monday.
Yeah, twenty-nine.
So we're already meeting the day after. We're already meeting the day after Memorial Day.
Get all mixed up here?
Yeah.
So right now, we're going the twenty-third and the thirtieth or thirty-first.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, is the thirty-first better? It's farther from any weekend. Either the long weekend or the shorter regular weekend.
The thirty-first is okay with me.
Okay.
I can do either.
Okay. Oh, Fran's good. It's a little bit better.
It's a little bit better, I, I have to check a couple things, but.
Yeah, if we, if we can make it a, like, a little bit more possible, I'm very happy to do that.
Yeah, I agree, I could do thirty-one, thirty, thirty-one, or June one, any, any of those. Oh, yeah.
Laurie, you can't do June one.
Francis is right here, that's.
Francis, Fran's there, Laurie's there.
I can do the thirty-first, I'll, I'll read it.
Let's go with the thirty-first.
Okay.
I will expect gifts as it's my wedding anniversary, but I will be coming hanging out with you guys.
Oh, that's wrong.
You're welcome. Okay, so the next meeting will be May twenty-third, the meeting after that will be May thirty-first, which is a Wednesday. The intention, um, hopefully with some microphones or something else for Sue's benefit, will still be to be in this room, I think it's been working well for discussion purposes. Instead of the kind of flat setup in the auditorium. Uh, yeah, and we'll go from there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, your anniversary, this is very good, I mean.
Thanks.
I just have a nice question.
Yeah.
The drafts so far don't have strategies.
Correct.
What's the process for?
So those, those are partially coming from staff, sort of. So those, those are partially coming from staff, sort of, both Paul and I have other professional staff, DPW, recreation, everybody else. Um, they will appear in some form in the next version, so when something is said, an updated section, though, more details along those lines will be.
Yes, I forgot, I had a very big, big question then.
I gotta.
For, for the, for the layperson, the public who'd be reading this document.